I'd like to call the Prince William County Public Schools Meeting to order here on February 1st, 2017. We're going to start off today's meeting with an invocation led by Pastor Aaron Miller of the Church on the Move in Woodbridge at the request of Ms. Allison Satterwhite of the Gainesville District. Mr. Miller?
Please join me in prayer. Father God, we thank you, Lord, for who you are in our lives. Thank you, God, that you have so much love for us in your heart, that you know us by name, oh God, and that you know every single mound of hairs on our head. Thank you, Lord, that you are here with us in this meeting. We actually should guide our conversation, guide our discussion, as we seek to further the Prince William County, for us to be productive and fruitful, Lord. Thank you for this opportunity we have to be with each other, and just as we come together and are excited, God, you are excited about us and are absolutely in love with us. Thank you again for this opportunity we have to be among each other and to further gain knowledge and wisdom and further in the Prince William County School. We thank you, Jesus, for what you're doing in our hearts and our lives. Give all the glory, Jesus. Name me prayer. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Do we have on to the Pledge of Allegiance, students, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, anyone in the audience, students that can come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Any students in the audience today? Not seeing anyone's. Come on up. Come on forward. I see ya. Come on up front, here's for the front here. You can come right up here front by the podium, and you can start the pledge, and then afterwards tell us your name, your grade, and where you go to school, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm Emily Jabuski. I'm in second grade, and I go to Rosa Parks Elementary School.
Sorry, we have new computers up here, so they seem to be working, but it seems, I'm getting a delayed reaction, but it, other than that, it seems to be working, so I apologize if it's a little clunky. We're on to item 10.01, Approval of the Public Meeting Agenda. A motion is in order?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Ralston?
My second.
Thank you. Discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Mr. Deutsch, I can't see Mr. Deutsch at all, so I just need to know which way, okay? Just make sure. I just can't see at all. Okay? Hold on one second. Those voting no? Just want to make sure I had this right. There was just the one. Ms. Satterwhite, you had your hand up, correct, too? Mr., and no one else. I just want to make sure I didn't miss anybody. Mr. Brand? Okay, just want to make sure, because I have to click different buttons. Don't want to get it wrong, because I don't know how to go back, quite honestly.
The vote is seven yes, one no. Deutsch, motion passed.
And then moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda, as soon as it comes up on my screen and on the big screen above us here. There we go. A motion is in order?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I'd like, excuse me, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Ralston?
My second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I would just like to once again bring special attention to our school board clerk, Ms. Debbie Urban, and Ms. B. Simpson over there, who's the deputy clerk. I know that we just went through awarding them their annual appointment, excuse me, but I recognize, as I always say, it's kind of, you have the job of herding cats, so I just wanted to, once again, tell you how much we appreciate you, and I do specifically, and thank you so much for all the work that you do for us.
Further discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. We have to, what, I didn't, would you like to pull a particular item, Ms. Satterwhite, or abstain?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'll just make comments later.
But the consent agenda has to be unanimous. We can't have a no vote against it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'll just abstain, then.
Thank you.
Vote is seven yes, one abstain. Satterwhite, motion passed.
Thank you. We're going to be moving on to citizens' comment time, but before, right before we do that, I'm going to take five seconds of chairman's prerogative. Today is my son's 12th birthday, and he'll be asleep by the end of board matter, so I'm going to say it before, before we move on. So I told him that I wouldn't be their first birthday present today, but I did tell him that we wouldn't be talking about a $1.4 billion budget, so that would ultimately be his gift. He still preferred Playstation games over that. So I just want to say happy birthday to my son, and I'm sorry for taking two seconds to do that, but happy birthday, Brady. What's that? And the presentation. Thank you very much. I did buy him a present, Mr. Wilk. Thank you very much for trying to call me out on, on that. I do, I do appreciate that very much, but yes, I did buy my son a present. Not quite as cold-hearted as you make me out to be sometimes, Mr. Wilk. Speaking of hearts, segue, segue, you like that? Yeah. Marjorie Churchburn of the American Heart Association would like to take a few minutes, and she'll be presenting Dr. Waltz with an award, as Prince William County is, is, is the top number-one county in Virginia for helping the American Heart Association fight heart disease. Ms. Churchburn?
Hi, my name is Kristin Campalango. I am the VP of Youth Market for the American Heart Association, and I just wanted to come down here and say thank you for everything you do. We wouldn't be able to do the research we do without you guys, and I just want to give you a small statistic for you. So right now, in your county, 65 schools are participating. Fifty-two of them are elementary, and they're doing Jump Rope for Heart. They've raised a little over $31,000 so far, and that's with 403 of your students registered online. So thank you so much for all you do, and I can't wait to see where they end up this year. And now I'd like to turn it over to Marjorie.
Thank you, Kristin. Hello, you all. Thank you so much for inviting me here again this evening. My name is Marjorie Churchburn. And three and a half years ago, I was hired for the very best job of my life. I began working for the American Heart and American Stroke Association. My job is to find and partner with the heart hero teacher or teachers within all of our schools by hosting our annual Jump or Hoops for Heart events. By doing this, we're able to get our heart-healthy, life-saving information to our kids, families, and entire community. I'm very passionate about American Heart and Stroke, because I myself have lost very dear loved ones due to cardiovascular disease. In fact, a couple of years ago, just a few days after Christmas, I lost my amazing dad to a sudden heart attack, and my loving mom was with him when it happened. She suffered a stroke and passed away just a few hours later, the same day. It was a day that changed my life forever and helped me lead down the path of being here with you fine people tonight. So it is so appropriate that today is February 1st, National American Heart Month. As you may know, heart disease is the number-one cause of death for both men and women in America. It can also be 80% preventable through lifestyle choices such as exercise and nutrition, but with your support through our wonderful annual events such as Jump and Hoops for Heart, we continue to partner with the schools to teach and instill the right habits in our youth. And with the donations we raise each year, we continue to make great strides in education, research, and quality of care. You, your teachers, administrators, students, and families are the power behind our efforts to improve cardiovascular health of all Americans and reduce death from heart disease and stroke. Your commitment, generosity through these events continue to make a difference every year. I have the great pleasure this evening of being able to honor three heart hero leaders in your great county this evening. Dr. Waltz, for his leadership and support of the physical educators and health educators, and support of our American Heart programs every year here in beautiful Prince William County. And the amazing team of Beth Tominek, Mr. Gardner, and of course, the now-retired Fred Milber, who have been my direct contacts to their team of outstanding physical educators within Prince William County. They have been so supportive, so dedicated to helping to make a difference. Their passion and enthusiasm and leadership is truly inspiring. Under the leadership of these individuals, it is my honor to announce, yes, Prince William County is now the number-one county in the entire state of Virginia for support, partnership, donations for our life-saving community service programs. A huge and admirable accomplishment. We are also almost 100% participation in all of our schools in this great county this year. Every heart-partner school is equally important, and their participation is equally appreciated. But last year, we even had four individual schools earn standout awards from the American Heart Association, and I'd love to present them tonight to sing the praises of these amazing teachers and administrators. So as I call your name, please come down, because I'm going to give you something, and you have to take a picture with me. Okay. So, I know you all hate to be in front of people, but I'm going to make you do it. So Signal Hill Elementary, Mr. Andrew Pitts and Mr. Ray Bowman, they received the highest percentage increase award in the entire mid-Atlantic region, and three other Prince William County schools also received top 20 awards for their participation for the life-saving donations they raised in our fight against heart disease. From Alvy Elementary, Mr. Michael Nottingham and Mr. Stephen Farrell, they received the award for being the number school, number 13th school in the entire state of Virginia. Springwoods Elementary, Mr. Corey Love and Ms. Chris Radtveck received the award for being the number eight school in the entire state of Virginia. And Rosa Parks Elementary, Ms. Trish Cimento, Ms. Audrey Boron, and Ms. Sue Danielson received the award for being the number seven school in the entire state of Virginia. So I thank you all, Dr. Waltz, Dr. Mr. Gardner, Ms. Tominek, members of our distinguished board. I thank all of you for the wonderful, hard work that you do, your support of these dedicated physical educators, school nurses, and heart heroes in Prince William County. Together, we are saving and improving lives every year. I love you all so much. So. Oh, there we go. And then we have some wonderful heart hero students here that brought presents. There are American Heart Association Heart Ledge cards that the kids can put this year playground for our school board. Can they pass them out? Okay. Would you like to hand those out? [inaudible] Good night. Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me, ma'am, take your picture. Okay? Excuse me. Excuse me, can you squeeze up a little?
She's still back there passing out.
All right, we are moving on to citizens' comment time. here, it looks like, sign up at the door. We're going to do our best to get, you know, as many in, in the 30 minutes allotted ahead of time. I'm going to suggest this, because I know there's a lot of people here, just a suggestion, take it or leave it. I know there's a lot of people here, and we're not going to obviously get to everybody on the front end, and we'll go through the rest of citizens' time at the end. If you're here in support of what the person is saying at the podium during this first half an hour, and you want to stand and rise to show your support for that, in case, in case you're not able to stick around towards the end to use your time, feel free to do that. In fact, policy encourages that as well. So I just want to remind you that if you do want to stay around to talk, you will certainly have your slot reserved for you, but you're welcome to do that as well. So the standard, the standard rules apply. If you've never spoken with us before, I'll go through them again. Everyone's got about three minutes to talk. I'm going to run the timer here from my computer, assuming it works. At 30 seconds, it's going to turn yellow. The time will be on the screen here above us, and at zero seconds, it'll turn red. At 30 seconds, please begin to wrap up, and at zero seconds, I will tell you that your time is up and ask you to step aside. I'm going to call the first 10 speakers up, and we'll see if we can get anybody after that, but we'll see how time, what time allows. So the first 10 speakers can come up and use the reserved seats here in the front. Our first speaker will be Bill Hoss, nice to see you back on the, on the docket here, Mr. Hoss. Then Steve Bender, Corey Holman, BJ Brown, Riley O'Casey, Diana Akins, Joseph Terry, Pat House, M.A. Sargo, and Jane Byer. Those will be our first 10 speakers. Mr. Hoss has been here before. He adjusts the podium by himself without Mr. Emon's help, so you've clearly, you've clearly been here before. When everyone gets settled, Mr. Hoss, as always, your time will start when you say "Okequan District." Mr. Hoss?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Waltz, Ms. McGowan, my name is Bill Hoss, and Mrs. Urban has my contact information. I still vote in Okequan District. We're not exactly strangers, are we? Tonight, you are scheduled to continue the process of the Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. You've had some very intense discussions recently, and you have met with the Board of Supervisors and agreed at least to keep a dialogue going. My recommendation to you is that good policy is good politics. Now, the core concern for our community is building enough classrooms to reduce class sizes and providing students with capable and committed teachers who can focus on delivering effective lessons. This is the most important matter before you. One of the best lessons about what constituents want most comes from an election that happened in November 2nd, 1971. Back then, school boards were appointed, and justices of the peace occupied that space on the ballot between the Board of Supervisors and the Soil and Water Commission. One candidate was running against the spoils system with slogans like "Vote the man, not the party," and "When you're a goose and the courthouse is full of foxes, you won't get any justice." Most voters paid more attention to higher offices, and many decided who they would vote for in the last minute. On Election Day, the incumbent justice of the peace came to greet voters wearing a big aluminum elephant over her outfit. This wasn't some fashion blunder recycled from Halloween, but it was perceived by some voters that she was part of a partisan elite. She lost every precinct. What I learned that day was that there's a large constituency for elected officials who care more about doing a good job than scoring political points for their party, and it stayed with me many years after my time in office. Good policy is good politics. You have a tremendous opportunity now to build on the attention. The classroom construction issue is captured. People across our county are looking to you to find a way to make things better for children in our schools. Forgive the past and begin again with sincere dedication to solve a critical problem in cooperation with the Board of County Supervisors. Good policy is good politics. Please, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoss. Our next speaker is Steve Bender. Mr. Bender?
My name's Steve Bender. My address is still on file. Chairman-at-large Sawyer, members of the board, Dr. Waltz, Ms. McGowan. The last board meeting, I spoke after the rest of the meeting, and I talked about the boundary vote that occurred two weeks ago. I watched the tape after I got home, and I verified that, in fact, as I said that night, we never really voted on the boundary. You talked about the motion to postpone, you talked about the substitute. We made a lot of perfecting amendments that night. Then we adopted the substitute, which means it replaces the original motion to postpone. Then we voted even on another amendment to add the fifth graders, and then we moved on to the financial compensation presentation. The board never actually adopted the boundaries. If you read through the minutes that are on tonight's agenda online, you can see that that's the case. You could argue it's a done deal. Chairman and I had a rather pleasant conversation with each other earlier this evening, and he's of the opinion that, well, that's close enough for government work. Unfortunately, as I'm sure she was asked, your attorney would tell you, not actually taking the vote isn't close enough for government work, and you really do need to go back and take that final vote off that unfinished business. Second issue is that, that night, we stripped part of the minutes of the meeting of the fourth. We voted to strike everything that was part of the special meeting. The chairman is certainly within his rights to offer that motion. However, he pulled it when the consent agenda came up. He gave no advance notice of his intent to make that motion, and according to Roberts' Rules of the Boarder Number 37, such a motion needs to be adopted by a two-thirds vote. I quote, "Any vote taken by an assembly may be rescinded by a majority vote, provided notice of the motion has been given at a previous meeting or in the call for the meeting, or it may be rescinded without notice by a two-thirds vote, or by a vote of a majority of the entire membership." But since Mrs. Satterwhite was absent, the entire membership was not here, and the two-thirds vote was required. That's a 5-2 vote, and you guys only had a 4-3 vote, which means that that motion actually did not pass. And so I would urge you guys tonight, at some point, to fix all of that. My last 25 seconds, since I'm going to be out of town in two weeks and won't be here, I want to take just this last few seconds to endorse Betty Covington as the name for the Potomac Shore School. Someone who's given 54, almost 55 years to the school division deserves recognition. Personally, I'd make it Betty Covington, Prince William County Public Schools.
Thank you.
But we don't want to go that far today.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Corey Holman. Mr. Holman?
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Corey Holman. My address is on file. It's great to be here today, and I'm sorry to those of you who missed our great meeting on Monday, where we had a chance to talk about and honor the two primary candidates for the naming of the new school. Both Ms. Covington and Mr. Harper are great people, and we all discussed that, and they're great friends, and I appreciate the fact that, that both camps have been above board. There's been no mud throwing, with the exception of folks who are outside of the camp, but those folks don't want to do what's right, they just want to tear it out. And so I want to support both of these candidates. I had a great conversation with Ms. Covington, and I know why. Mr. Harper says, "You're such a great person." We talked after the meeting, we talked for 10 minutes, and I've grown to love her in just a matter of 10 minutes. She's here today, and I'm glad she's here. Mr. Harper is not here because he's still in the hospital, but his family is here, and I'd like to ask them to stand, please. Thank you. There's a lot of people who want to speak here today, and I'm not going to go through and just talk a lot about either one of these candidates, but I will tell you this. Despite the fact that both of them did a lot of great things together while they served on the school board, they were both elected at the same time, I can tell you that there's one big distinction between Mr. Harper and Mrs. Covington. That major distinction is the fact that Mrs. Covington was just honored two years ago by the school board with the naming of the library of the Dumfries Elementary School. It was named after her. I went to the school, and big letters on the front of the building, you know, and she's very deserving of this. It's a wonderful recognition. Big letters on the front of the building. So every time when kids come up, they see the Betty Devane Covington Library. When they leave and get on their buses to go home for school, they see the Betty Devane Covington Library. Parents, when they pick up their kids, again, they see Mrs. Covington's name on that library. Let's not get into the habit of recognizing the same people over and over again. We have two local heroes here. I'd like to ask everyone who is in support of Mr. Harper to please stand. Let's honor the wishes of the community. Let's recognize another local hero, Mr. John Harper Jr. for the naming of the Potomac Elementary School. Thank you so much for your service, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Our next speaker is BJ Brown. BJ?
My name is BJ Brown. Currently, numerous legislative studies and bills concerning the ADHD epidemic and the lack of breaks, recess, and PE are in legislatures around the country. States have become aware of the unsustainable pressure on their budgets due to ADHD. We now have epidemics and misdiagnosed ADHD, bipolar, and autism due to the weakening criteria in the Mental Health Manual called the DSM, and this is according to the architect of the DSM. The resulting cost for necessary educational assistance and mental health treatments for ADHD and other childhood mental illnesses exceeds $52 billion annually. Right now, there are 6.4 million children in the United States that are diagnosed with ADHD, and 65% of them are taking psychostimulants as treatment. The side effects of these drugs have caused increasing numbers of individuals to end up in jails, state hospitals, juvenile detention centers placed on Medicaid, Medicare, and Social Security disability. The Manual of Mental Health Disorders, or DSM, now allows normal differences in childhood temperament to be diagnosed as a mental disorder due to the weak DSM criteria, according to the architect of the DSM. The pharmaceutical industry's efforts to expand its market have been aided greatly by the expansion of the listing of mental health disorders contained within the DSM, the principal reason for which was to ensure that treatments would be reimbursable by health insurers, Medicaid, and Medicare. The approval of direct-to-consumer advertising has also benefited Big Pharma in this regard. Nearly 57% of the doctors and editors who wrote DSM IV had financial ties to the pharmaceutical industry. Nearly 70% of the doctors and editors who wrote DSM V had financial ties to the pharmaceutical industry. The ADHD epidemic is also due in part to No Child Left Behind. The requirements of No Child Left Behind have significantly increased the demands placed upon children, schools, and families by triggering the decrease or outright removal of break times, recess, and PE from school schedules, and the increase of homework, testing, and academic pressure. No Child Left Behind took effect in 2003. From 2005 to 2009, disruptive behavior disorders were the most common diagnosis in child and adolescent antipsychotic visits, mostly involving males. Children could not sit all day without adequate breaks and balanced schedules. The results of the schedules, children now have longer schedules than adults. No Child Left Behind resulted in significant increases in the rates of ADHD, obesity, self-harm, anxiety, depression, and other childhood disorders.
Thank you.
And the rise in antipsychotic use and a fall in high school graduation rates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Riley O'Casey. Ms. O'Casey?
Good evening, Chairman Sawyer, board members, Dr. Waltz. My name is Riley O'Casey, and my address is on file. The results from the recent compensation study presented at the last board meeting are insightful. The recommendations include modifying the teacher's salary scale to reflect market rates, considering the request of school nurses to be paid on the teacher's salary scale, and increasing the budget for tuition reimbursement. In fact, when Mrs. Ralston asked the presenter for her opinion based on this study, she thoughtfully replied, "Concentrate on beginning teacher salaries to make PWCS competitive with attracting world-class applicants. Recruiting the best and brightest, supporting them as they grow, and rewarding excellence, that should be your number-one priority. These are vital to employee morale and student learning. It does seem a shame that $400,000 was spent on the study, because PWA has been advocating for these changes for years. $400,000 versus the cost of a cup of coffee and an hour with the PW, PWDA leadership, big cost difference, but same result. There is great uncertainty right now in education. The president's pick for Secretary of Education could bring devastating changes to public education. This is a time for unity and collaboration. Board members, we need you to be role models as we fight for our students. We need you to fight for us. People are watching, students are watching. We cannot expect the thousands of employees who come to work each day to support our children to be held to a higher standard than you hold yourselves to. We need you to work together with us and return to why you originally ran for We need you to work together with us and return to why you originally ran for this position, to be an advocate for the students and bring about positive change. Hasty decision-making and lack of collaboration is having a devastating effect on the reputation we have always been proud of. Pitting one side of the county against each other, targeting individuals and groups, acting in ways that we would never tolerate from our teachers or students, it hurts every one of us and could destroy much of what we have built together. Only you can address this. We are asking you to do so. Are you asking the experts for their input before making decisions? The educators are the experts. Are you observing and collaborating as opposed to ordering and dictating? Again, unity and collaboration are what we need right now. The superintendent proposes his budget tonight. I am hopeful that the issues PWEA continues to advocate for remain intact, decreasing class sizes and an increase in employee salaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Diana Akins. Diana?
Hi, good evening, Chairman Sawyers, board members, and Dr. Walts. My name is Diana Lambert-Akins, and my address is on file. I am here tonight to encourage you to name the school at Potomac Shores after Betty D. Covington. Mrs. Covington has given fifty-four years of service to Prince William County schools. During her tenure, she was a teacher and assistant principal, principal, and a school board member. I spent a lot of time thinking about words that would describe Mrs. Covington. For those of you who know her, know there are many. I have chosen to focus on one word, and that's advocate, one who pleads another's cause. This certainly epitomizes her career, and I have been a witness to that for the past forty years. Her advocacy started in her classroom with students and parents. It grew when she became a principal to an entire school, and eventually as a school board member for the entire county. She was an advocate for children, ensuring that teachers had high expectations for student learning, and high student learning was the goal. Back in the seventies, eighties, and early nineties, we didn't have SOLs, but we had other assessments. And Kilby Elementary, where she was the principal at the time, often scored high during that time. Many principals would call her and ask her about those scores, and I know because I was there. When she became the principal of Dumfries Elementary, her high expectations led to high SOL scores and the school becoming a school of excellence. She was often an advocate for students with regards to their parents even. She often helped parents see the other side of a child's behavior. If she had to call a parent, she wanted to make sure the parent understood that the behavior needed to change, and she didn't want parents to be too harsh. She wanted to change the behavior, and she did this in many different ways, and working with parents and being an advocate for the child. I'll remember one example of her advocacy for children. She had a fifth-grade student who ran home after school and started horsing around with a bunch of boys, and he broke the storm door on his home. He was really upset, and he knew he was in big trouble. So he ran right back up to Kilby, ran right to Betty Covington. Betty Covington called a repairman, and they fixed the door right then. She didn't want recognition. She was there for the child to help him at that time, and she knew the parents well. And I know that because I was there, I was in the room. She was often an advocate for parents in times of need and stress. Parents would call her and come to her, and she would quickly get on the phone and call agencies and churches and try to help those families. And she'd always say, "Diane, they're just down on their luck." She, and if all else failed and she couldn't get the resources, Betty Covington took care of it herself. She paid that electric bill. She bought their food. She was, as a school board member, she was an advocate for all students and families. All decisions were made based on the needs of students. She worked with the superintendent, school board members to implement full-day kindergarten head start, and I'm trying to get through that, and it's turning around. Okay, please, please name the school after Betty Covington.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joseph Terry. Mr. Terry?
Chairman, board members. My name is Dr. Joseph Terry, and I was, my address is on file here. I've been residing in Woodbridge, the community, for about the last twenty-two years. I've had three adult children who have graduated from this esteemed school system, Prince William County, and have gone on to do great things. I'm also a business owner here. After retiring from the military, similar to Mr. John Harper, I decided to put down roots here, like he did. Let me start out, when I was growing up in New York, we had schools, PS eighty-seven and different things like that, and we were in numbers. It didn't mean anything, and I'm glad to see that we don't do that here at Prince William County. When I moved to North Carolina, we had schools named after people, like we had John Hawkins, Don Graham, and things like that. Great civic leaders. And I'm here tonight to push forward that someone I think that is a great civic leader, which is Mr. John Harper, who I think who has done a lot. When he retired, besides myself, I mean, similar to me, when he retired from the military after twenty-plus years, he went to work in Prince William County because we feel that this is our community. Like myself, who get out there and involve in civic act duties, I didn't do it nearly as well as Mr. Harper has done. He sat on the board, he's part of you all, and I'm not here to tear anyone else down, but I just feel strongly that this new school should be named after Mr. John Harper. As was said by, stated earlier by Mr. Holman and some others, we already have something named after Mrs. Covington. Nothing against Mrs. Covington. I, like Mr. Holman, I think she's a wonderful lady, but I think it's time now that we honor Mr. Harper for all he has done. If we think about it, he sat on the school board, he sat on the Prince William County authority. He even chartered fraternities in there. The fraternity that I belong to, he's a charter member to that. So that said, if we look around, if we would have some of our chapter members stand up here, we believe strongly that this new school should be named after Mr. John Harper. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pat House. Pat?
My name is Pat House, and you have my information on file. I am a resident here in Prince William County, and I'm here to support and recommend Mr. John Harper Jr. as the name for the next new Potomac Shores Elementary School. Mr. Harper, I know him as the husband of BJ. He is a family man, father, grandfather, a highly decorated retired Lieutenant Colonel, Army veteran who served twenty-three years, and he has ventured many of us here in the county, and we regard him as being a respected mentor as well as an remembered, respected advisor. Mr. Harper has been a resident and a productive member in Prince William County for over thirty years, and I've known him for over fifteen years to be a man of character and commitment, especially through his Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity as a member of the First Mount Zion Baptist Church in Dumfries, while working with him on voter registration drives and as a member with the NAACP. The Alpha Phi Alpha has a mission statement which says, "It develops leaders, promotes brotherhood, and academic excellence while providing service and advocacy for our communities." I share with you that Mr. Harper fulfills these qualities with his outstanding service and involvement in our community and the education of our youth. He has demonstrated his leadership, service, and advocacy in our community as the first African American to be elected to the Prince William School Board, as the first African American to serve on the Board of Directors for the Prince William County Park Authority, the first African American to serve as Department Director in Prince William County Government Administration, the first African American to serve as Grand Marshal of the Dale City Independence Day Parade, and by receiving the Trailblazer Award from the VA Leadership Institute for his outstanding service to the community. Mr. Harper has promoted brotherhood by mentoring over two hundred men in his fraternity, as well as an advisor to the members in Prince William County. He promotes excellence by raising thousands of dollars for his fraternity's Howard Dorsey Scholarship Foundation annually, which provides scholarships to deserving students while mentoring at Menneville Elementary School. And as director of the Dale City Rec Center, he implemented a program called Midnight Basketball, which successfully provided teenagers and young adults as an outlet to avoid unwanted behavior in the community. He also supports the fraternity's Boy Scouts effort. I agree with the previous speakers who commented that we do respect and appreciate Ms. Covington's accomplishments and that she has already been awarded and recognized with the school library. Therefore, I request that the new Potomac Shores Elementary School be honored for John Harper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. House. Our next speaker is Emma Sargor. Ms. Sargor?
Good evening, Chairman, Superintendent Walts, school board members. My name is Ms. Sargor. My information is on file with the office in terms of my residence. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight regarding the naming of the Potomac Shores School. It is a privilege for me to advocate that the school be named for John Harper. I have known John for twelve-and-a-half years. Shortly after I moved to Prince William County, I was elected to a very important, as a chair, to a very important community organization. It was at that time that I first met John Harper. He was also a member and proved to be insightful as he helped me work through some very new and important issues. As such, he was a direct benefit to me as well as to the organization. I have relied on John for his historical take on growth and development of the county. Currently, we are both involved in supporting several community organizations, and in each one, I have seen his leadership qualities and his excellent communication skills. I have watched as others have called on him for advice and knowledge, and I know that his influence in this county is widely recognized. Since meeting him those many years ago, I have read numerous biographical sketches about his life, his career, his community involvement. These sketches continue to enhance my true belief that no one could put an exact number on the number of citizens, young and old, that he has influenced in Prince William. He is tirelessly devoted to promoting peace, equality, and harmony. These are the qualities that enhance his character. I hope you will consider naming the new school after John Harper.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jane Byer. But before that, before Jane, before you start, I think we can get about two more speakers in, so we'll call up, at least, hopefully we get them in. Melvin Brown and Barbara Laramore are our next two speakers, so if you want to work your way forward, we'll go from there. Ms. Byer?
Thank you, Jane Byer. My information is on file. Thank you, and I want to address the chairman and the board members and the people in the room. I'm here to support Betty Covington for the naming of the new elementary school. I love and respect Betty, as many people in this room do, including many of the board members and maybe all of the school board members, and one most particularly I remember saying many, many times and hearing Lily Jesse say that Betty was her sister-soulmate, being a principal for years together and working together so, so well. I would love to have the people in the room that support Betty to stand for a brief moment, as the chairman suggested, and I'm going to be very brief. I know Betty has tons of accomplishments in the field of education, which many people that know better of those accomplishments will say. I chose to focus tonight on her many volunteer efforts in the community. She has served on the Boys and Girls Club for several years and also volunteered for bingo many Friday nights. And one thing I can say, working with Betty, volunteering with Betty, you have a good time even when you're working. So I think many people can say that. She also judged the VFW Patriotic Pen, did a state judging for Voice of Democracy for that organization. She has helped many years to work on the NOVAC Annual Scholarship Awards for many deserving seniors in high school get fifteen hundred dollars or more, and is the, I think, resident judge for the Bel Air Women's Club Spelling Bee for many, many years, and served with many of the board members that also did it with her. In her fifty-four years of working in education, her heart has always been concentrated on the kids, as Diana mentioned too, and what is best for them, both in education and their life, their life skills lessons. She will never, you will never find anybody more dedicated to the kids in Prince William County, so please consider Betty for the new school. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we can get two more speakers in here. Our next speaker is Melvin Brown. Melvin?
Dr. Walts, Mr. Chairman, Distinguished Board Members, my name is Melvin Brown II. I am the chaplain for the Prince William County Chapter of Alpha Lambda and Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. And I want to echo the sentiment shared earlier about focusing on the positive things that people do in our community and our country. And that's what I believe Jesus meant when he said, "Let he use without sin and cast the first stone." We have two imperfect people who have served in an imperfect world. In physics, we learn to use the scale to measure the weight of something, and if there's an imbalance, then one side of the scale would rise higher than the other. In order for the scale to be balanced, there had to be equal weight applied to both sides. Today, the balance of our community recognition is out of balance. The scale has been tipped by the weight of well-deserved honor. We would like to bring the scale to an equal balance to ensure that well-deserved honor is given on both sides. For more than thirty years, Betty Covington has served the people of Prince William County and specifically the families of Dumfries Elementary School. Her efforts have led to a well-deserved honor, a library named in her honor inside of Dumfries Elementary School, and her name is proudly displayed on the outside of the school. Then there's John Harper Jr., father, grandfather, Vietnam veteran, educator, mentor, trailblazer, community leader, a man highly decorated by his country but unrecognized by the county he continues to faithfully serve. A man whose financial strategies and efforts while serving on the school board, we still enjoy today. There is an imbalance on the side of honor, but you, the school board, can bring balance to an unbalanced scale. As the elected officials, your term is limited, but your decisions are lasting, and you have the power to create a win-win for our communities and our families. I'm reminded of what my Sunday school teacher taught me. She says that you reap what you sow. And if you sow unity, you'll get unity. If you sow division, you'll get division. If you sow imbalance in the life of someone else, then there will be imbalance in your life. And so I would ask you, the school board, to put your thinking caps on and consider naming Potomac Shores Elementary School after Mr. John Harper Jr. and renaming Dumfries Elementary after Mr. Betty Covington, finishing the work that the Dumfries community has already begun and beginning something new and bringing the balance of an unbalanced scale to a balance. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker here, before we get into the rest of the agenda, our final speaker here on the front end is Barbara Laramore. Ms. Laramore?
I didn't, I didn't realize it was going to be such a big house today when I created my speech for today, but here it goes. I'm going to get a little personal. I was at the pep rally, which most of you were. Hi, welcome back. We missed you. So, and afterwards, it was two, three in the morning, so we were a little bleary-eyed, to say the least, but I had spoken to Ms. Williams about recess and PE, and she said, "Barbara, I just didn't like recess when I was a kid." And I thought to myself, "How could anybody not like recess?" But then, I slept on it, hard, because it was three o'clock when I got home, but I slept on it, and I thought, "Barbara, neither did you." And I tell you why, because recess was hard for me as a little kid. I was stressed because I was, I had low self-esteem. I was painfully shy, believe it or not, painfully shy. My academics were poor, very, very low, very poor. I was from a military family. We moved around, and moving from Colorado to Virginia was a really big difference for me, and I was miserable at my new school at Langley Air Force Base, just miserable. And it was one of the counselors who pulled me aside. Obviously, they all saw that I was struggling academically, socially, emotionally, and after a few perfunctory questions, which were, "How were you today? You know, how was the weather?", just bawling in tears, you know, of everything that was going on in my life. So obviously, they had talked to the children in the class to try to help me because I didn't have a friend in the world. And I remember, I don't remember the teacher's name, I don't remember the school's name. I remember this little girl's name. Her name was Nikia, natural leader, obviously, even among the eight-year-olds, she was a natural leader. And she took me under her wing. She didn't take me under her wing studying for SOL tests. She took me under her wing at the recess, at the playground, and, sorry, I was trying not to cry, but... not to cry, but she, just as simple as asking if I wanted to play tag, just that simple act, to say, "Come play with me, come be a part of us," made all the difference in the world. And some people will say, "This is just a boy issue that I'm just pulling for my sons," but that isn't the case. I'm pulling for all of our kids, and those kind of interactions happen on the playground. Those kind of interactions are necessary for the social and emotional and academic development of our children. So, you know, when I, when I say that, when some people tell me that recess is hard, I get it. It's, it's hard because it's getting kids to work together, but that's where we learn, that's where we grow, and that's a part of how and who I am today. So, please consider those things when you're talking about the recess, and hopefully it'll be on the agenda soon. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Hold on, just one more. All right. We're moving on to item thirteen point zero one, which is the proposed joint county and school capital process. Mr. Klein, if you want to step up and give us a reminder about what this all is, and we can go from there.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Walsh. As you recall, just about a month ago, January the tenth, the school board and board of county supervisors had a meeting here in the Kelly Building. A part of the discussion that evening was the proposed development of a joint schools, county, capital process, essentially to have a collaborative process to work through, initially at least discussing CIP processes and how we might work collaboratively to try and work together and improve the process of the CIP when we go through it each year. The outcome of that discussion was the idea that each of the boards would essentially adopt a motion to authorize staff to participate in such an endeavor. And at that meeting, a, the recommendation that each board appoint two members to participate on such a joint task force, with also the caveat that the two board members, the school board would appoint first, the board supervisors would appoint two additional members, and all of the members would come from a, from separate magisterial districts. Since the time that this was placed on the agenda, since we're, it takes a while, obviously, agenda-wise, the county, county executive has also passed on that the board of supervisors at this stage would certainly like to continue in the process. They would like to change it to allow for three members instead of two, and then with the provision that there could be overlap, that a school board member and a supervisor could, could be on the panel from the same magisterial district. This item is on the agenda tonight as written as two members. It is on here for discussion and action. However, in light of the fact that the board may or may not choose to act tonight, it is also as an agenda item on the May fifteenth board meeting, should you choose to defer that, I'm sorry, February the fifteenth, pushing it back way back. So you, in a sense, have discretion of the board there. The county, I think, seeks to go ahead, is not, would like to move forward as soon as possible, but certainly the options there are there for the board.
Thank you. Is that it, from your end? Okay, thank you. What I'm going to do to the board here, real quick, ask the board, because this is on for the first time, and actually, it wasn't exactly what we discussed at the joint meeting, we can, we can basically suspend the rules and waive kind of the second reading, so to speak, and do this in, 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 tonight, if we'd like to, which I certainly don't have a problem with. Does the board, does anybody object to, we can waive it by policy, I believe it's two-thirds vote, which is policy one forty? Yes, we can waive it with two-thirds vote, but I, I think it might be unanimous, I'm going to ask for unanimous consent to go ahead and vote on this tonight and make it an action item. Is there any objections from the board? Okay. With that, I'll go ahead and make a motion here, and I will, like Mr. Klein said, it there, it does say two in here, and I will adjust. We're doing, it'll be three. I'm going to make the motion here in one second. My motion that the Prince William County School Board authorize the school division participation in the joint county school capital process and appoint three school board members to serve on the committee. Those members are Sean Brand of the Brentsville District, Lori Williams of Woodbridge, and Lily Jesse of Okaquan. Do I have a second? Ms. Williams?
I second.
Thank you. Discussion? I'll start, since it's my motion, actually quite simple. Those were the three members that went out, that either expressed interest in some way, shape, or form to me to be, to be on this. It was originally two, like we had discussed with the B O C S, and then, so those were the members that we had, so those, those are the members that I'll put forward, and we can, we can go from there. So that's why I'm putting it forward. Again, the original intent was to have people, if, if two members were from the school board, then there wouldn't be two magisterial members from the B O C S from the same district, but now there may be a little overlap, and again, I think it's, it's a bit of a moving target that way, but these are the three that express interest, so therefore, those are the people that I'll put forward. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Thirteen oh two, school naming, Potomac Shores Elementary School. Mr. Klein, again.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Walsh. This evening, the Prince William County School Board is to receive information from the naming committee relative to the recommendations, potential recommendations for Potomac Shores Elementary School. Mr. Dave Beavers, Supervisor for Planning and Financial Services, Office of Facility Services, will provide a brief presentation to highlight the process and the naming committee process. Mr. Beavers?
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Chairman Sawyers, members of the school board, Dr. Walsh. I'm glad I don't have to give the presentation on the budget, so thank you. I had the pleasure of serving as the facilitator for the school naming committee. I'm with the Office of Facility Services, so that seems like a natural fit. Now that we've determined back on, on January eighteenth, who will be attending Potomac Shores Elementary School, it seems like a wonderful time to come up with a world-class name for that school. Tonight, we'll briefly walk through the process that we used to develop naming recommendations and give you the opportunity to discuss any portion of the naming suggestions or process that you'd like. First, our naming process is guided by policy eight fifty-four and regulation eight fifty-four dash one, which we have been slightly revised since the last time we used them, but this is the third time we've used the new format to go through this process. Policy eight fifty-four calls for the creation of a naming committee, but also notes that the final approval of the school facility name rests with the entire school board. Regulation eight fifty-four dash one tells us that the naming committee will be composed of the chairman of the school board, Mr. Sawyers, the school board member in whose district the unnamed facility is located, and in this case, that's Mr. Wilk, and any school board member whose district is overlapped by the attendance area for the unnamed facility, and in this case, Ms. Williams. It's important to note that the committee is charged to consider these naming criteria: geographic elements, historical items, names of living or deceased persons who have made significant service contributions. Now, the most recent revision to the regulation added language that says, "Selection preference will be given to those individuals who have made significant contributions in the field of education, especially within Prince William County." The naming committee is charged with holding a community input meeting in order to solicit recommendations and suggestions from the public. The meeting was held this past Monday night, January thirtieth, at Potomac High School, and was attended by more than fifty people. In terms of timelines, tonight is the presentation of the naming recommendations for information, and February fifteenth meeting will be when you're scheduled to take action on the naming of Potomac Shores Elementary School. Here are some visuals to, to help you see where we are. We see the construction of Potomac Shores Elementary School on the left in an aerial view as of December. Everything's moving forward and on time, and the school will open this fall for students. The school is located at twenty-five-hundred River Heritage Boulevard within the Potomac Shores community in Dumfries. Here's an architectural rendering of what the school will look like when it's completed. The prototype that's being constructed is the same as that used for Triangle Elementary and Chris Young Elementary. That concludes my remarks. At this time, you're welcome to proceed with any discussion relative to the naming of the school as you wish. We have received a number of suggestions via email, and overall, here are those naming suggestions, just to run through, in no particular order. John Harper Jr., Betty Covington, Cherry Hill, Potomac Shores, Lilian Orlick, Barack Obama, Barack and Michelle Obama, Michelle Obama, Nelson Mandela, John F. Kennedy Jr., Gordon Parks, who was an American photographer, musician, writer, and film director, Catherine Johnson, who was a NASA physicist and mathematician, Horace Mann, an American politician and education reformer, Ashley Gwyndon, the late Prince William County Police Officer, and John Graham, the founder of Dumfries. So, those are the names we've received, both in person and by email, for your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to open up discussion, just to let the board know, like we've done in the past on things that aren't up for a motion, I'll, I'll put a little five-minute timer up to kind of keep, and if we need to go around again, we're more than welcome to do that, but just to kind of give everyone their fair shake at getting their words in if they want to. Does anybody want to start? Going once, going twice? Okay. Thank you. Moving right along. We have the proposed budget and CIP. We are on to superintendent's time. Man, my computer is really dragging. Okay. Fourteen point zero one, FY twenty eighteen, proposed budget and CIP. I throw it to the far right here. Dr. Walsh?
Thank you, Chairman Sawyers and members of the school board. Tonight, I'm going to give my usual budget speech, followed by Mr. Klein, who will go through the detail of the superintendent's proposed budget, which will eventually become the school board's budget. And since many months have passed since you've done this before, just as a reminder, tonight is the presentation of the budget. For those in the audience, the school board is seeing this for the first time. This is where the budget proposal is unveiled. Questions about the budget may be submitted by board members directly to Mr. Klein, and we have multiple budget work sessions, so tonight is actually not a night for questions, but there will be plenty of time for questions at subsequent meetings and school board work sessions, and again, you have the opportunity to submit them directly to Mr. Klein. So with that, I am pleased to propose a Prince William County Schools budget to serve the needs and aspirations of each of the nearly ninety-one thousand students expected for the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year. We are proud of our top-notch people, programs, and facilities that are essential to student success and continuous school improvement, but we continue to find ourselves constrained by limits on funding. By prioritizing needs and controlling costs, we offer a spending plan that maintains all existing educational programs and services, provides more than twenty-six million dollars for the two thousand four hundred twenty students additional than were included in the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen budget. It will boost employee pay of every employee by two percent to help attract and retain the best teachers and staff. It funds eight point nine million dollars in increased debt payments on needed school construction and improvements, including the new non-traditional school at Independent Hill, covers cost to open the new elementary school at Potomac Shores, and the replacement for Kilby Elementary School, and invest an additional eight point four million dollars toward meeting urgent classroom, school, and division technology improvement needs. Balancing the budget was not easy. Anticipated funding from the Prince William County Board of Supervisors and the Commonwealth of Virginia, while higher than the year before, lagged behind the cost of added enrollment inflation and growing expectations. In total, new costs added to the budget exceed expected new revenue by approximately eleven point four million dollars. Only careful planning and economizing let us fully balance spending with anticipated revenue. The result is a proposed twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen operating and debt service budget of one point one four billion dollars. This is not the budget of our dreams, however, it will fund student success. It also allows us to maintain, however, I must say, this is not adding to, it is maintaining, the incremental progress we've achieved toward addressing school board priorities such as class size reduction. It includes money for closing the achievement gap and doing our best to limit the use of educational trailers. With anticipated per pupil funding still among the lowest in the Washington DC metro area, making bigger strides will be difficult. That is why, at the school board's direction, through the evaluation process, I have also provided, again, at the board's direction, a supplemental plan for achieving much greater progress on strategic priorities over the next five years. This supplemental plan includes an expedited plan to further reduce class size, eliminate all trailers, close the achievement gaps, and estimates the necessary financial investments. I look forward to working with the school board to use this proposal and the supplemental document as starting points for moving us toward an approved budget. They will provide for student success and school improvement in the coming year while charting a course to build on that progress without undermining the foundations of our current successes. With school board guidance and help from all stakeholders who see investments in our students as a top priority, we can ensure a bright, world-class future for our children and all of the residents of Prince William County. At this time, Mr. Klein, Associate Superintendent of Finance and Support Services, will go through the detail of the proposed budget. Mr. Klein?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Walsh. Before I start into the budget, I would like to take an opportunity very briefly here to certainly give thanks to a number of people as we've gone through the process. Certainly, being the superintendent's proposed budget, Dr. Walsh has provided the leadership and guidance as we go through this entire process on an annual basis. We've had certainly support and assistance from the superintendent's staff. Within the budget staff, I certainly would like to express a very, my appreciation to certainly Mr. John Wallingford and Ms. Kathleen Addison for the many days, nights, and weekends by which we have been sharing emails and updating the budget and getting it forward. And at the same time, there are many other departments that assist in the process, but notably Facility Services, Information Technology Services, as we go through CIP and TIP, our communications and media folks as we put together the budget process, and I would be remiss if I did not mention my assistant, Mrs. Sherri Kleins, for her assistance, probably in helping keep me sane, but thank you all very much. To start out, we'd like to certainly highlight what the budget process is and how that fits into Virginia law. As the superintendent indicated, this, this is the superintendent's proposed budget coming forward. It is, in Virginia law, defined as a document that comes from the superintendent to the school board and certainly is done in collaboration and an understanding of many of the needs and priorities that the, the school board would like to see. At this point, it comes forward to the board, then, the school board then revises, approves, and eventually submits a budget to the county reflecting the needs of the school division. In turn, the board of county supervisors is responsible for funding the school division based upon the request for the- school board and, and certainly is done in collaboration and an understanding of many of the needs and priorities that the, the school board would like to see. At this point, it comes forward to the board, then, the school board then revises, approves, and eventually submits a budget to the county reflecting the needs of the school division. In turn, the Board of County Supervisors is responsible for funding the school division based upon the request for the school board, keeping in mind that the supervisors are responsible for setting tax rates, and the supervisors do not have line item authority over the budget. They can either budget it to us by a lump sum appropriation or by broad state categories. Uh, at times in talking to citizens, there is some confusion, and we simply like to remind them, the school board does not have taxing authority. Uh, while that might be the case in something like ninety percent of school divisions around the country, within the state of Virginia, that is not the case. Before I go into the detail, again, I'd like to just touch on some of the highlights of what we're gonna see in this budget, and you can, uh, focus on the details as we go through it. Again, uh, we're maintaining our current programs. Uh, we have seen a substantial growth in enrollment compared to the last several years. We're, we're seeing, this budget has to support two-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty additional students, which is an increase of, of about two-point-seven-five percent. I'll clarify this a little bit more as we go through. Reaching a total student enrollment next year is projected to be ninety-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-six. This provides for a two percent pay plan adjustment per the school board's approved five-year plan. Not what we necessarily want, but that meets that, that, that sort of, the minimum standard that we've had in, in maintaining a balanced five-year plan. We have a number of required state increases for, uh, Virginia Retirement System, which we'll touch on. We are maintaining our class size reduction efforts. We're maintaining our capital improvements program, and we are also funding some improvements within the technology programs related to the Student Information Management System and equipment for bandwidth enhancement. Now to the, the, the dollars and the revenue. This highlights the total budget for operating and debt service of, uh, just almost one-point-one-four billion dollars, uh, with an increase this year, which in many ways still seems somewhat huge, and it is, uh, we're, we're approaching almost fifty-eight million dollars. The operating fund grows by about five percent. The debt service fund, reflecting the mortgage and payment on, uh, construction of buildings and facilities, grows by just over ten percent. Our, our county revenue is developed in accordance with our revenue sharing agreement. Our revenue from the state comes as a function, this is the second year of the biennium, and certainly it is built based on the governor's proposed budget. Keeping in mind the second year of the biennium from the state, they are typically funding as primarily for growth in student enrollment. All of the real funding and budget adjustments occur in the first year of each biennium, which would, in this case, be next year. Again, just to highlight, uh, the, a couple of things that were within the state, certainly these governor's proposed budget. There is no additional, uh, restoration of any reductions that the state's made in prior years. From a pay raise perspective, the state funds a one-point-five percent bonus effective as of December first of two thousand and seventeen. The state has also mandated an increase in an accelerated program for funding the Virginia Retirement System, uh, and, and those are, uh, our, our primary items. Our, our cost per pupil, just to keep it in perspective again, and this is within the Washington area Boards of Education using their format so that we have some form of apples-to-apples comparisons among the districts. Prince William County remains at the, the bottom of the chart again, with a, uh, per pupil amount of ten-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-one. Uh, if, if we were to take a look at Loudoun County Public Schools for perspective, who's, we're the second-largest school division in the state. They are the third-largest school division in the state with, I think, about eight-to-nine-thousand students fewer than us. If we were funded at the level of the Loudoun County Public Schools, we would have a, a budget that would be one million, I'm sorry, one-hundred-and-ninety-three-million-nine-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand dollars higher. The operating budget for Loudoun County Schools is actually higher than our operating budget. As we look at cost per pupil over time, uh, we'd also like to highlight that effectively, if we're looking at our, uh, unaj, or adjusted for inflation, uh, of about nine-thousand-thirty-seven, that actually goes back and is actually slightly less than what we were being funded on inflation-adjusted basis back in two thousand and six. Again, we, when we talk about county funding, and this is a chart that the county has used to highlight, the county provides just over forty-eight percent of our budget, not to be confused with the number in the revenue sharing agreement, but one of the elements, uh, that, that the county likes to highlight in this is, in fact, our overall tax burden in Prince William County is about thirty percent, less than that of our neighbors to the north. If you go back to FY two thousand, two thousand and one, et cetera, uh, the, the tax burden at that point was somewhat comparable. But certainly, that, that, that in turn helps reflect why the per pupil funding that we receive from the county is substantially less. Just a reminder that, uh, from a state for, funding perspective, during the course of the, the Great Recessionary Period, the state division, I'm sorry, statewide, made a reduction of about one-point-seven billion, million, one-billion-seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-million over the biennium. We certainly took our share of those cuts. The vast majority of those cuts have not been restored by the, the state. They have discussed, and they've made some minor improvements. Again, being the second year of the biennium, these are not items that they would go into this year to look at addressing. From the funding perspective, one of the things that impacts us is not only the growth in student enrollment, but the, the students, uh, and the needs for the students that we have to fund. So certainly, over a five-year period, we've seen about an eight-point-nine percent growth in overall student enrollment. Our special education population has grown by fourteen-point-three percent, which places an additional burden essentially on the budget. Our English language learners population, as we've indicated, has pretty much flattened out over the last, uh, five or six years. Now, it is still a substantial number, they're still growing, but essentially, as a percentage of the po, the total student population, it's flattened out. That generally helps the budget because at least it's not exceeding the, the pace of growth of total students. And finally, our free and reduced lunch population, uh, is still exceeding our growth in student, total students, but we'll note that the number last year over the, the previous five-year period was just over twenty-two percent, so it has slowed somewhat. Uh, we'll see how that continues to change or evolve. Uh, in theory, we saw a very significant change here and nationwide in students that qualified for free and reduced lunch coming out of the Great Recession. One would think eventually, as the economy continues, that that would catch, catch up and it would start to balance out. Certainly, we have not seen that yet. Another element I wanted to highlight is when we look at our percentage change of student enrollment, uh, really going back, going all the way back to nineteen ninety-one. But more importantly, if you go back to two thousand and nine, you'll notice in two thousand and nine, we had growth in enrollment of four-point-one percent, and we have steadily declined in, in the, if I correct, the years at the bottom reflect September of that particular year. So September sixteen on the far right reflects this past fall and would be relevant to fiscal year twenty seventeen. But one of the impacts we've had in the budget for, uh, really the past seven years is we have seen continually, or we've continued to grow, the pace of that growth has slowed, which in turn has made it easier to balance the budgets in those years that we've been going through. Unfortunately, as we go into this year, we really kinda get a double whammy. One is, we see our student growth in enrollment goes up by one-point-nine percent, simply in the sense of new projections. That's just over seventeen-hundred additional students. However, if you recall this past fall, we also picked up seven-hundred-and-four students above projection in the current year, so we are actually, that's where we get to having to fund two-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty additional students when we go budget to budget. Again, from enrollment trend, we tend to keep growing. We're projecting, uh, enrollment growth of ninety-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-six next year. And again, as we go, uh, addressing our budgetary needs, uh, I attempt to highlight here the fact that, uh, the, the biggest issue we deal with certainly in the budget is for every twenty-four students that walk in the door, one way or another, we have to provide a teacher, we have to provide a classroom, and we have to provide the associate, the appropriate and associated services that go along with that. Uh, the slide here is simply an effort to, to highlight what some of those costs and those services are. It, it's therefore your and the public's information. As we get into the proposed budget itself, starting with the, uh, two thousand and seventeen approved budget, which was just over one-billion dollars for operating and debt service, we have a number of baseline adjustments that are made essentially as we shift from one budget into the next. The most significant items within baseline adjustments would be, we eliminate one-time costs, but the biggest one generally is they shift in, uh, the, the changes in salaries as we go from budgeting for salaries in one year to recognition of those actual salaries as we go into the succeeding year. If you recall last year, between, uh, budgetary actions to kind of reduce our holdback allocation, plus, if you recall last spring, as we went into the approved budget, we had identified a substantial growth, we, we saw that growth in, enrollment coming. Uh, we raised the concern we might be seeing it. In the spring, we had certainly seen it as a, a increase in a number of ELL students. We did, in fact, recognize the, that additional growth. We funded a good part of it in the approved budget, and obviously even more in the fall. As we go into the, this budget, we have to restore those funding amounts for the holdback allocation, and again, its primary purposes as we go into the fall to ensure that we have additional funding to address normal, what we would normally see as growth in student enrollment. Obviously, this past year, we've seen a substantially, a rate substantially higher than that. The proposed budget does not include an inflation factor for supplies, materials, and equipment, and within the context of the budget, there are a number of, uh, federal, state, and local grants and self-supporting, uh, programs. Revenue comes in for those particular areas. This identifies three-million dollars that's associated with that revenue that then is dedicated to supporting those specific programs. Within compensation, uh, this budget does not provide for a step increase. It does provide for a two percent pay plan adjustment, a, effectively a COLA, which would be two percent for, uh, across the salary scale for employees. And that, again, is consistent with, uh, the plan, if you will, that is included within our approved five-year plan. There would be sip, slippage in, in compensation associated with that, which essentially means due to turnover of staff, vacancy rates, et cetera, we can reduce some of those costs, acknowledging that we will recoup, uh, some of that cost as we move forward, to the tune of just about seven-point-five million dollars. Our Virginia Retirement System, our costs go up by nine-point-five million dollars. If you'll recall, in the governor's budget and General Assembly last year, uh, they had accelerated the rate for the Virginia Retirement System to reach a level of one-hundred percent funding to basically, uh, get the total pension liability back on track for the, uh, Virginia Retirement System. They've accelerated that, and our cost share for this year is nine-point-five million. In doing so, our rate goes up by one-point-six-six points, which amounts to about an eleven-point-four percent increase in the rate for Virginia Retirement System. The good news in one sense is, this gets us up to the, what would be considered the normalized or hundred percent rate. We may see rate changes in the future, but they're really a function of normal actuarial changes for experience and the economy and that type of thing. We would be out of the catch-up mode. However, this year, we have to pay the bill. Uh, and, and one sent, the other one is that our health insurance, and I'll come back to another slide in more detail later, uh, we are projecting a one percent increase in our health insurance rates for employees, and, and we think that is a very positive item, uh, going forward into this budget. Additional changes, uh, obviously, the, the biggest one out there is certainly with two-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty additional students, the cost of maintaining programs and services for those students is twenty-six-point-four million dollars. So when you kinda look at this budget as opposed to last year's budget, one of the substantial differences is we have, and I don't remember the exact number, we're, we're putting about another ten million dollars into simply growth in student, paying for the growth in student enrollment to maintain programs that we didn't have last year. We make adjustments for funding of startup costs for Potomac Shores, take up the, take out the initial startup costs, put in the fixed allocation to start the school, and we would proceed forward. We participate with, uh, Thomas Jefferson High School as a governor's school. One of the components of that was, we picked up a, as a part of that process, we pay for part of, uh, in, we paid for part of the renovation of that building. There was a four-year schedule to, uh, adopt a payment. This recognizes the additional thirty-one-thousand dollars, and this is the fourth year of the four, uh, that, that puts us at the point that we are fully paying for that, uh, sort of our share of that building renovation, and that is, to the extent that we are sending students to that school, we are actually helping pay for part of the facility cost of that school. And finally, as I previously indicated, our debt service, our net adjustment, our net increasing cost is eight-point-nine million dollars. Uh, as we've moved forward in our approved five-year plan, we have, uh, for the last several years, we would continue the process by which we increase, uh, recurring funding for our Technology Improvements Program by five-hundred-thousand dollars, and we would intend to continue doing that, uh, in the succeeding years. As we look at new resources, and again, this is substantially different from last year, uh, again, a function of both simply what we have in revenues and what the, sort of, our fixed costs have already, uh, required those expenditures to be. Uh, the first four items amount to, uh, we have a nursing coordinator, a half a performing arts teacher at, at Colgan as a function of the support for the, uh, Specialty School for Fine and Performing Arts. Uh, we continued with, uh, a program we started last year. This is the second year of some additional programmatic funding, uh, for Osborne Park to, to facilitate their programs as part of the pre-governor school. We funded part of it last year. This, uh, provides that, the second component to that. And six-tenths of an FTE for a, a division-wide student activities director. Those are the, sort of, the personnel costs or the, sort of, true recurring costs that are within this budget, amounting to one-point-six FTE and just over two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. The big items, if you will, that are, are within new resources, one is that the board had directed, the superintendent moved forward with a review of the special education program, and this provides funding, uh, to, to meet that requirement. In addition, we've certainly identified the need for the last several years that our student management, Student Information Management System is, uh, effectively reaching its end of life. The vendor will no longer be supporting it. Uh, as a result, uh, we had planned for, and, and, uh, last year, we started this process of, uh, setting aside some money. Uh, this would then, uh, fund a, not necessarily all of it at this point, uh, but six-point-four million towards the replacement of that system, keeping in mind, again, that this is a one-time cost, uh, so while it is funded in this year's budget, it's not an item that continues over into next year's budget. Likewise, one of the items that certainly has been identified is, is concern over increasing a network, network bandwidth. Uh, at this part of the budget would facilitate, uh, funding to buy the equipment necessary to help support the increase in bandwidth. You have to get the equipment in before you can buy the service, uh, at some point in the future, whether it's in the next year or in the following budget. We would then need to come back and essentially identify funding to support, uh, the fee you would pay to, to obtain the actual service of the bandwidth. Coming back to look at balancing the budget, as you'll recall, last year, we opened the Division-Wide Aquatics Center. Uh, the Aquatics Center is up and running. Uh, it is in the process that it is, uh, working as an enterprise fund. It generates revenue. We certainly expect it in, in its first year of operation, the current year, that it would require funding because, for example, uh, we, we had an aquatics manager on staff starting in July. The pool didn't even open till September. Uh, we are moving successfully at, uh, operating, uh, the pool. This would reduce the transfer to the Division-Wide Aquatics Center, uh, by a hundred thousand dollars. And finally, as, essentially, the balancing mechanism is, as a part of our budget, annually, we fund new construction projects and renewal projects from a variety of means, both debt service and cash. This essentially takes, uh, uh, just over eleven million dollars in projects that may previously have been funded as a function of cash. We are still funding cash projects, and shifts it to a, to debt finance the budget, uh, to this portion of the budget or that portion of the CIP, and this in turn, uh, balances our expenditures and our rever, revenues with a total of one-billion-one-hundred-and-thirty-seven-million-four-hundred, forty-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-eight, and again, balances the budget. As we look at the Capital Improvements Program, and certainly the school board had a work session back in January, and, uh, much of that detail then is available, but to hit some of the highlights, uh, the Capital Improvements Program would, uh, look at a relocation from the current Anne Ludwig Facility, which is, uh, certainly, in, we're gonna need to do something relative to that facility regarding, relative to repairing and upgrading it. This would make a relocation of the staff and facilities there to other locations, continue those services, and that's been added in eighteen. In addition to Minneville Elementary School in nineteen, adding, uh, the, what was previously a, an elementary school in these Stonewall slash Yorkshire area is Yorkshire area in twenty-two, and adding another one in the Stonewall area in twenty-four. Likewise, also adding an elementary school to the Okaquan Woodbridge area in twenty-twenty-four. We have previously had a thirteenth and fourteenth high school identified in our CIP. Our enrollment numbers still continue to climb. While we had 704 additional students this past year in the fall, we actually had 777 additional high school students above and beyond what we had projected. So we are still seeing pressures in that sense, which help justify the need for a 15th high school. We have currently put that into the CIP in 2025. The exact year, that could potentially slip back further. It would really depend on what's happening with our student enrollment numbers as we proceed probably through the next two or three years. But again, from our total number of students relative to this total capacity around the county, we see the need for an additional, for the 15th high school, and therefore, we also will have to look at acquiring a site for that high school with a plan for that in 2019. We would also be looking at adding and considering middle school music rooms as we do our middle school renewal programs, looking at an addition or renewal to the Kelly Leadership Center out in 2027. It seems amazing to me that this building is actually in its ninth year of operation, and at some point now going out another 10 years is what it amounts to, we are likely to have to look at addressing potential space implications and updates for this facility. There are several items that were removed from the CIP. The previous CIP had an elementary school at 2024 in Vent Hill area. That one is currently out of the CIP. We also had an addition for an elementary school in the Haymarket area that we talked to you about last year. That has also been taken out of the CIP. And finally, as I've mentioned before, the CIP within the technology area, we would include technology enhancements of replacing the student information management system, which we would go out to bid next year and move forward toward awarding a contract to replace that, and again, equipment to support increases in network bandwidth. A brief summary, then, of what is in the five-year capital improvements program. And again, we're seeing growth of almost 8,500 students in that time period. This provides for six new, I won't go through all the details, six new school facilities, 93 additional classroom additions, three support facility improvements. And again, we'd be looking at a current student capacity of over 87,000. This would increase our capacity by about 8,400 students, but keeping in mind that at this point in time, we still have 211 portable classrooms. Each year, as we go through the process, once we sit down with the budget, we also have to turn around and take a look at the five-year plan. And doing that, we take a look at what are the costs for current programs and services? What is our growth in new students? What are the additional costs to maintain and continue those programmatic and instructional programs we have for students? Repairs and renewals, which would include CIP, including the cost for new schools, and balancing that off against what our projected revenues are. Again, I would certainly like to make the reminder that the five-year plan does not mean, it's zero in every year. We have a fiscal obligation. The fact that the five-year plan is balanced does not mean that the needs of the school division are being met, simply that the school board will balance the budget as required by law. In order to briefly touch on that five-year plan, these are the basic assumptions that are contained within that plan. Again, it's based on an increase of about 3.5% in revenue from the county per their revenue last, or plan last year. It has alternating years for pay plan adjustments, as we indicated, 2% in '18, the year we're going into. It would also be in '20 and '22 with step increases in 2019 and 2021. This pattern of adjustments has also been a pattern that is essentially reflected on the county side as they go through their budget process. We're not exactly the same each year, but again, we have typically been trying to follow a comparable pattern of pay increases alternating between step increases and pay plan adjustments. For plan purposes, we budget for health insurance going up by 5% a year. And again, for Virginia retirement system, the good news is we've reached the point at which those rates now go to fully funded. We will, that will take some of the pressure off future budgets, and we will simply have to look at how that is adjusted relative to the actuarial changes for the pension fund. We continue our capital improvements program. We do have a balancing mechanism in some years of utilizing bond funding for cash-funded projects. It goes up and down in various years, and over time, it certainly changes as we move from one year to another and our costs and revenues adjust. Again, a reminder that we, this does not, in this budget process, does not eliminate trailers. We currently have 211 of them, nor does address approximately $200 million in other needs that have been identified within the budget. The following slide, as we've talked somewhat about debt service, and debt service is really, we sell school bonds, we build schools. This is the mortgage. Our mortgage payment this year is roughly $97.2 million. Over time, we're seeing about a 5.4% annual growth rate in that mortgage. This particular year, it is a 10.1% increase. Again, that's a function of the debt that we've issued really the last couple of years and this year as that comes due. Again, we also have a requirement under the county principles of sound financial management to try and ensure that our debt service payments do not exceed 10% of our annual revenues. And certainly, the cap, if you will, on that, to the extent that annual revenues go up, the cap on that goes up, and you have additional debt capacity as well. We've highlighted, again, that this provides basically an overview of health insurance rates since 2007. The national rate for growth in health insurance on average has been running about 9% to 10%. We, as a division, have actually done much better with our self-insured fund and have been at an average about 5%. This year, in a sense, we are pleased that the increase for coming into the next year is 1%. We think we're doing well. We will continue to do that. A reminder that really, the real components of what drives our costs for health insurance are really only two things. We are self-insured. We contract services, we pay the bills. Two things drive those costs: utilization of health insurance by our employees and the rate of medical inflation. Those are basically the two items that drive our costs. Overall, we think we're running a well-managed program, and our costs have reflected that as well. In summary, certainly, the school board develops, again, and this is sort of a reminder as much to the public, we develop and put forward a budget that is within the funding constraints that are provided. The county and the state are our two biggest sources of funds totaling about 96% of our total budget. We seek to meet the needs of our students with programs and services to provide a quality education. We will recognize that there are many areas that we don't think we are necessarily meeting all those needs, but certainly, we're meeting our fiscal obligation. And we have needs certainly in class size reduction, overcrowding, permanent building space, competitive salary and benefits, restoring of previous cuts, and certainly improving instructional programs. As we've indicated from the superintendent, we are giving our students a great start. What we invest in their journey may help determine how far many can go. As we move through this budget process, this reflects the budget timeline. Again, tonight is the first time the budget is presented and put out by the superintendent. It's the first time the board sees it. And at the same time, there's sort of an understanding, the superintendent cannot provide the budget to the board without providing it to the budget at the same, to the public at the same time. Again, the intention is not to take any action on this budget tonight, just to remind people, this is the beginning of a process that takes place over about two months. This provides the schedule by which we have a public meeting next Monday, work sessions through the month of February into March, a markup of final approval. We go to the Board of County Supervisors to present the school board. Once the school board adopts a budget, present that budget to the Board of County Supervisors on March 28th. They are currently scheduled for adoption of a budget in April the 18th. But wait, there's more. While we've provided a budget and meeting our obligations, certainly with the revenue sharing agreement, the superintendent has moved forward that proposed budget. At the same time, the school board has directed the superintendent to develop and propose supplemental budget to help identify additional needs that exist above and beyond those funding issues that we've identified and addressed within the context of the proposed budget. As we move forward, I will touch on four basic areas that fulfill the elements of essentially a supplemental request, that being class size reduction and the discussion of an expedited five-year plan, costs associated with the potential elimination of trailers, additional items relative to closing the achievement gap, and sort of compliance, other budget priorities. I'll go through these one at a time. Again, this is a function of a directive from the school board to the superintendent to bring forward a plan to look at supplemental budget needs of the school division so that we can bring that to the attention of both the supervisors and the general public. As we go through this plan, we'd like to highlight a couple of components. While we could certainly sit down and throw some really huge numbers out there, and there are some really huge numbers out there, we've attempted to do this in a, really, I think, a fiscally responsible manner to say, it's not just a wish list. We've looked and said, let's go back and say, the Great Recession came right after 2007, and rather than just saying, let's just arbitrarily pick a number of what do we want to have in our classrooms, what we might want to have, and in many cases, might best practices be, this essentially takes us back in saying, let's look at what we were funding, the programs we were funding, the staffing ratios, et cetera, as recently as 2007, and look at what it takes to get back to that level. I confess that about 10 years ago, I stood up here and said, we're going in the Great Recession, and I'm afraid it's going to take us 10 years to get out of it. I was wrong. 10 years is right upon us, and we are nowhere close, unfortunately. This plan does not include restoring many of the school and central office reductions. It does not attempt to go back and restore pay scales and benefits that one can argue were not comparable in that time period to what was provided in previous periods. Again, this sort of summarizes it once again, and many of the things that we've had to do during the Great Recession, we had significant revenue reductions from both the county and the state. They were addressed by making a variety of budget cuts, including class sizes and teachers. We took reductions across the entire budget. This is a plan to look at going back and seeing how we can install effectively the instructional components of many of those reductions. The next several slides start to walk through sort of many of the components that say to get back to that level of fiscal year 2007. What would these items be? Now, again, keeping in mind that if I take a look at many of the numbers, we'll see some really big numbers, but in order to provide a realistic plan, this really looks, in this slide I'll identify, we have some funding numbers relative to a column for fiscal year 2018 to identify some specifics, but keeping in mind that the total need out there, this would take, is what it would take to go back to really the 2007 level. So this was much more, again, of an incremental approach because I think, to be realistic, it's not going to happen overnight. There are areas within this budget and within this plan that I would like to highlight. Certainly, the first two items there, while we refer to economically disadvantaged and at-risk, the greatest correlation there is with student performance is economic status. So as a function of that, we have historically and continually for the last, for almost 30 years, provided funding to schools to help, based on the number of students that are considered economically disadvantaged, to provide funding to those schools. Essentially, this is a mechanism for providing additional funding for at-risk students. It can also be seen as funding that's provided for helping close the achievement gap in our schools. This is the only monies, and there are monies in the regular budget, this is in addition to what we currently have, that go towards these areas. These are the only monies in the budget for which there's really not a programmatic requirement. The school looks at what their needs are, they look at their achievement gaps, they look at their school performance, and this is one of the few areas in which, on a school-by-school basis, looking at their own students, they have an opportunity to look at how they can best address the needs of their students in that school. This plan calls for essentially another $1 million at K5, almost $700,000 at 612. Obviously, the greater need is almost $12 million. If you converted that to people, because I'm not saying it's all going to be people necessarily, that actually reaches almost 130 teaching, excuse me, 130 teaching positions. Or another way to put it is, there are 130 fewer teaching positions today in our system than there would be if we were using the same funding mechanisms that we had had in 2007. Other areas are certainly within special education for specific learning disability, one of our achievement areas. Again, emotional disabilities program, English language learners. And there are still, we have pretty much caught up to 2007 relative to K3. I think particularly for grades one through three, we have actually managed to restore back to the 2007 levels. At grades four and five, that's a function of eventually reducing the cap in class sizes further. That's essentially another nine positions division-wide. For the total plan, this would provide partial funding in fiscal year 2018. As we continue, similarly, we made reductions in middle school. This would provide for additional funding for middle school, special education, again, in speech and language impaired, visually handicapped, hearing impaired, regular high school, student instruction, again, diagnosticians, occupational therapy, physical therapy, adapted PE. And while gifted education is there at the moment, it is not an additional component in '18. It would be being addressed as we continue through the total need and in the out-years of the plan. For perspective, again, this request, if you will, continues to the tune of approximately 6.5 million in fiscal year 2018. And one of the components we certainly have to look at is, it is the tie also between changing the programs, restoring the programs, and space. If we went back and said, we would, if somebody gave us the opportunity to give us $37.5 million and had the opportunity to hire 450 more staff members, we would not have a place to put them. We would certainly do our best to try, but it would create a space issue as a means of... Going through this, no, again, even, and I'd like to make another highlight, that while we have essentially 452 fewer positions today relative to 2007, at the same team, keep in mind, we are attempting to achieve higher standards of student performance since then in an increasingly regulated educational environment while addressing greater diversity with students facing increased social dynamics. It's a much tougher world than it was 10 years ago, and we're still trying to move forward. Again, this does not include any potential associated support costs or central office costs relative to students and staff. So if we turn around and look at the next component, that essentially becomes space. And these involve everything from site acquisition to new elementary, middle, and high schools. The issue in FY '18 is, again, when you're looking at the construction of facilities, it doesn't happen overnight. Therefore, within the context of '18, we have elements of school site acquisition, school construction going forward in our CIP. For '18, please look at the CIP, and you can see those specific components. In order to address the space needs driven by the additional, and this looks at the total numbers, the total numbers of restoring back to 2007, this generates an additional almost just over $277 million. How does that occur in a sense? Well, I'll give you a couple of examples. For example, I previously highlighted middle school teachers. We identified a total need essentially where we had of restoring 91.82, let's just say almost 92 teachers. But a middle school contains 76 classrooms. If we added 92 additional regular middle school teachers, effectively, it identifies in some way, shape, or form the need for 1.2 additional middle schools. At the high school level, that would generate 107 additional high school teachers. A high school currently, a general high school currently contains about 101 classrooms. Hence, that's where we'd be looking at this and saying, we need two additional elementary schools, an additional middle school, an additional high school in the long term. The second component of the supplemental budget request would be taking a look at the elimination of portable classrooms. Again, there are 211 portable classrooms, looking at the distribution of our students in portable classrooms, trying to take into account how we are proceeding in the current five-year plan, because the current five-year plan is not eliminating trailers per se. We have, since Dr. Walz came here, I think we have reduced the number of trailers about 25, I think. We've made some minor progress, but obviously, we're still sitting with a substantial number of trailers, 211 divisions. of trailers, 211 division-wide. To eliminate them is a cost of about $307 million. And again, I've identified needs for site acquisition and specific schools to try and accomplish that. As a third component, and while that's identified as closing the achievement gap, I really need to highlight something right off the bat. Keep in mind that closing the achievement gap covers many areas in the budget. These are several additional items. When I talked earlier about the expedited five-year plan, many of those items in the expedited five-year plan, economically disadvantaged, the changes in ratios for special education, are all elements towards closing the achievement gap. I don't want the perception that we can fix the achievement gap by funding $4.5 million. That is not the case. Again, these are addition, and the ones that are specifically identified here reflect a director of school improvement, additional instructional coaches, that is staff development for our teachers, and additional teaching positions within special education regarding specific learning disability. Between the first portion of the expedited five-year plan and the item, the closing the achievement gap, that effectively adds approximately 60 positions within specific learning disability. And as we reach near a conclusion, looking at some other needs and additional priorities that we know exist within our school division, we've identified, within the proposed budget, we identified the equipment needs for increasing a network bandwidth, and certainly, there's a need to go from what I think our current one, is it gigabyte, needing to go to 10, is a substantial need going forward. Once that equipment and the hardware is in place, it's like paying for cable. You can get the cable in place, but then you got to pay the cable fees. Well, our fee for increasing that service is $720,000. As a function of our administrative management systems, we have a need for an applicant-tracking, evaluation, and record system. Much of this is done in a very manual process today, and we certainly have a tremendous need to move forward with a significant improvement in that area. We also have a need to improve our records retention systems, particularly, I think, some elements of email. The federal government has imposed, we always call them unfunded mandates, but storm sewer environmental standards continue to tighten up year by year. We have some additional requirements in that area. It becomes increasingly difficult to track what those changes are and ensure that we are in compliance. Obviously, on a day-to-day basis, we will continue to do our best. We really need more resources to help pursue that. Likewise, on our website accessibility, we need additional support. And the final item in this is the school board, a number of school board members had requested from the superintendent that there be additional staffing that, you know, the Board of County Supervisors certainly have, I believe they have an office and three staff members essentially for each member, and I'll go to the next slide. This essentially takes forward a proposal that would provide for essentially a sec, one secretary for each of the school board members. It does not specifically provide for any office space, and then it would also include monies necessary to the operation of an office. We would still have to look at how we would provide sort of office space. And a final item, as we go into this budget, as we recall from Chairman Sawyer's remarks from January the 18th, and I can be happy to quote it, I guess, I think, I'm pretty sure our quote's right. Would you like to re, I'm not good at impressions. I'm the finance guy. So the money, more of those budget cuts. The money has been allocated to the school board. If you take out the situation as has existed over the last few weeks, had that money been appropriated to the school board, we would have then handled that money through the normal budget process, or if it was an addendum to the budget, the superintendent and his staff would bring us an addendum and say, here's how they planned on spending it. The superintendent has then added a recommendation to respond, in that sense, to the chairman's request, with an identification for the $10.675 million as to land acquisition on the east and the $10.675 million expressed as debt service towards the 13th high school plan with the additional 500 seats. Again, as we get to the end of the process here this evening, just a couple of reminders. Again, process-wise, this is the superintendent's proposed budget required by law for him to provide to the school board. At this point, the budget process transitions to the school board budget process. We have provided the proposed budget, and per the school board directive, have provided the supplemental budget information. Historically, the school board has not engaged in an extensive or question-and-answer session at this point, because like the public, you have just received the information. Much of it can be overwhelming. We have significant time to go through the budget process. From that, we will have work sessions. Eventually, we'll come back and vote. Certainly, along that lines, if you could send, call me, email me, send me your questions and concerns, and we will endeavor to get those answers and turn it around so that we can provide answers to all of the board relatives of the questions that each of the school board members have. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and I'll remind everybody in the general public that we have the budget meeting coming up. Budget session is on Monday. Is it seven o'clock, Ms. Urban? Seven, Debbie?
Six.
Seven o'clock is the budget session, the budget hearing, excuse me, on Monday. Seven o'clock right here on Monday, so we'll have, and board members, I'll remind you, if you have any questions about this, feel free to send them to Superintendent Dr. Walz and Mr. Klein, and they'll be able to prepare answers for that. Okay? Thank you. Moving on to superintendent's time. Dr. Walz.
Thank you, Chairman Sawyers, and members of the board. Congratulations to four of our schools on high rankings in the annual Student Literary Magazine Competition, sponsored by the National Council of Teachers of English. Benton and Graham Park Middle Schools and Woodbridge High School received a superior ranking. Forest Park High School received a ranking of excellent. This is in recognition of outstanding efforts by our student writers, editors, and faculty advisors. Congratulations to Woodbridge High School senior Fatima Difan on being selected as the winner of the Harry F. Byrd Junior Leadership Award for the 11th Congressional District, which comes with a $10,000 scholarship. Northern Virginia Community College recently received a $100,000 grant from Capital One Foundation to help develop its cybersecurity pathways project. A pilot program with Forest Park and Potomac High Schools will provide training to teachers and counselors and internships and job shadowing opportunities for students to learn about the growing field of cybersecurity. Congratulations to our finance office on receiving the 2016-2017 Meritorious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials International. This is the 21st consecutive year of such recognition. The award recognizes Kathleen Addison, Supervisor of Budget, and her staff for their work on the Division's FY 2017 Budget. John Wallingford is the Director of Financial Services. David Klein is the Associate Superintendent for Finance and Support Services. Again, congratulations. Now, it is my honor to recognize the dedication and the hard work of the Prince William County School Board during School Board Appreciation Month. Our school board members deserve credit for the high quality of education that is provided to the students attending Prince William County Public Schools. All school division employees work hard daily to fulfill our mission of providing a world-class education to our students. However, we could not do our jobs without the help, leadership, and commitment of our dedicated school board. Chairman Sawyers, Vice Chairman Jesse, and members of the school board, for all that you do for the school division, students and their families, our employees, and the Prince William County community, the superintendent's staff, and I sincerely thank you with these heartfelt words. My staff and I are also happy to present you with the gift baskets that are at your place, and these are our personal token of thanks. And since the question had been raised in prior years, again, no tax dollars were involved. These are our personal gifts to you. The Virginia School Boards Association has provided certificates of appreciation, and you will find those at your seats as well. It is our privilege to recognize and to honor you tonight during School Board Appreciation Month. Thank you for all that you do. So please take time to enjoy. A lot of student effort was expended at the various schools to recognize you during this appreciation, so please take a few moments to enjoy that. And in closing, at our next school board meeting, at the request of Vice Chairman Jesse, it will be time for my next report to the school board and the community on the board's identified superintendent's goals for the current school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walz. We'll do what we normally do, which is traditionally do, which is skip ahead to citizens' time before the board matters moment. So we'll, I'm going to call the next 10 speakers that are on our list here for citizens' time, and you can come up and take a row in the, take a row in the front seat, take a seat in the front row. Mr. Howard Ford, Vera Fletcher, Corey Davis, William Card, George Hampton, Alfranda Dur, Emmett Fletcher, Andrea Bailey, and then we're on to the sign-ups at the door, Hilda Barg and Jim Knazek. As a brief reminder, everyone will have three minutes to speak. The timer above us, I'll start from my computer. We'll get you going. At 30 seconds, it'll turn yellow, time to wrap it up. At zero seconds, it'll turn red, and I'll ask you to step aside. Proper decorum at all times, otherwise, we'll ask you to step away from the podium. Again, our first speaker is Howard Ford. Howard?
Greetings, Mr. Chairman and members of the school board. My name is Howard A. Ford Jr., and I'm a resident of Brentsville District. I am the cyarkon of Epsilon Sigma Boule, Sigma Pi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. I'm here tonight in support of naming the new elementary school in Potomac Shores in honor of Mr. John Harper. Mr. Harper is a dedicated and decorated military veteran, a trailblazer in the pursuit of equal and quality education in Prince William County, an active and committed community leader, and he has served on the Prince William County Board of Supervisors, School Board with distinction. I believe Mr. Harper's professional and community credentials exceed the certain, the criteria established by the school board. Naming the elementary school in Potomac Shore in honor of Mr. Harper was served to inspire the students to emulate Mr. Harper's commitment to academic excellence, to being actively involved in community services, to pursue social justice, and to represent their fellow students regardless of their race, ethnicity, and religion. On January 16, I had the privilege of attending the youth orientation contest that is annually sponsored by the Delta Research and Educational Foundation in affiliation with the Prince William Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and in conjunction with the Caesar and Irene Hilton Foundation. In their orientation about what the world needs now, the students pointed out the racism, people are in tolerance of one another, and how people are not listening to each other. They talked about religious bigotry and poverty in our communities. But more important, they pointed out the need to be hopeful, to be tolerant of each other, and to listen to one another, to become actively involved in the community, to speak up and take the stand when there's a need to address the issues of social injustice. I believe this African-American man, a community leader, Mr. John Harper, embodies all the things that these middle and high school students said they thought we needed now. By naming an elementary school in honor of Mr. Harper, the school board can send a signal that it wishes our students to recognize, honor, and celebrate the contributions of such a distinguished citizen in Prince William County, Mr. John Harper. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vera Fletcher. Ms. Fletcher.
Good evening. My name is Vera Fletcher, and my address is on file. I'm here tonight in support of encouraging you, the school board members, to name the new Potomac Shore School in honor of Mr. John Harper Jr., a very deserving citizen of Princeville County. I met Mr. Harper 35 years ago, when he entrusted his son Mark to work with my husband and I to sell subscriptions to the Washington Star newspaper. I'm telling my age. Mr. Harper, in his understanding, the value of work ethics and responsibility, knew his son would learn from us, and it would give him the opportunity to both save money and be responsible. Mr. Harper has been a trailblazer, pioneer, and friend of Princeville County community for over 35 years. Mr. Harper served our country and retired as a lieutenant colonel with 23 years of service from the U.S. Army. February is Black History Month. I'm very thankful for the, Mr. Harper, many first African-American accomplishments in Princeville County, which brought diversity to our county that needed and inspired many others to apply for positions and seek opportunity in the county. Mr. Harper lists the first include being the first African-American to be elected to Princeville County School Board, 1995. First African-American to serve on the Board of Directors for Princeville County Park Authorities, 1985. First African-American to serve as grand marshal for the Dell City Independence Parade in 1996. First African-American to serve as Department Director in Princeville County Government Administration, Director of Dell City Recreation Center, 1987. Mr. Harper has been active in Princeville County for many years, has demonstrated commitment to education while serving on the Princeville County Board of School Board and mentoring students at many of our elementary schools and mentoring many citizens here in Princeville County. We, the community, have two deserving senior citizens before us, we, before us, school board named to honor. I believe both these individuals, the Honorable John Harper Jr. and Honorable Betty Cudman, former principal of Donovan Elementary, both are former members of the Princeville County School Board and deserve his school name and their honor. I suggest, and would like to recommend, that the new school be named after Mr. John Harper, John Harper Elementary School. We are in a situation here in Princeville County where the Princeville County need to work together and do the right thing, and I thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Corey Davis. Corey?
Good evening. My name is Corey Davis. I am a resident of Prince William County. My address is on file. It is hard to imagine in this day and age that there is a more important challenge for our society than that of education. In particular, there is a challenge of providing quality education to a broader swath of our population here in Prince William County. The introduction of Potomac Shores Elementary to Prince William County is a vital step in the direction to ensure we provide the necessary facilities and learning environment for our elementary-age students to thrive in. Some would argue that a name bestowed on an educational facility isn't important in the grand scheme of things, but I am here to tell you that a name chosen for educational facility is extremely important and has a lasting and enduring effect on students who walk in and out of that building daily. In an effort to bring balance to our community recognition process and to be inclusive of all ethnicities and backgrounds, tonight, I stand before you in an attempt to persuade the board to rename Potomac Shores Elementary to Harper Elementary after Prince William County's very own John Harper Jr. John Harper Jr., a dedicated Vietnam veteran that proudly served his country, also served his community in various roles, such as an educator, a mentor, and a community leader, to name a few. He is a proud and dedicated resident of Prince William County for well over 30 years. Needless to say, John Harper, by any definition, is a trailblazer and a dedicated citizen of this county. Racial diversity continues to increase in Prince William County. Therefore, it is extremely important that our school system reflect the community that it serves. To name a school after John Harper Jr. would be beneficial to the many young minds that walk through those doors daily. To see the name of a local hero who happens to be African-American gives motivation to our multicultural students that it is possible to serve your community, to make the sacrifices for the greater good, and be honored for it. As members of the school board, you have the power to make a statement within our community. By renaming Potomac Shores Elementary to Harper Elementary, this action would send a profound message to our diverse community. I quote author Yehuda Berg in his statement, "Words are singularly the most powerful force available to humanity. We can choose to use this force constructively with words of encouragement or destructively with using words of despair. Words have energy and power with the ability to help and to heal." I strongly encourage you to reflect on the power of the words and consider renaming and consider renaming Potomac Shores Elementary to John Harper Elementary. Let's make a statement to Prince William County and beyond that we are an inclusive community that recognizes all citizens for their hard work and service to our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is William Card. Mr. Card?
Good evening, Chairman, School Board Supervisor. I rise today for a, actually pleasant task to recommend that you name the Potomac Shores Elementary School after Betty Covington, a four-time member of the school board. You've heard her resume, a woman who's dedicated her life to students and population of Prince William County, and served as a classroom leader, assistant principal, principal, and again, as a school board member, total of over fifty-four years' service to the county. In particular, I'd like to point out that that entire list of names, that the gentleman who talked to the issue of the proposed names, there was only two that, that meet the criteria of your own Regulation Fifty-Four One that stipulates that you must consider and focus on the contributions made to both education and to Prince William County. And, and the weight of fifty-four years of dedicated service, a to, you know, a woman who, who is, if you look up dedicated public servant in the dictionary, it will be there. And so I strongly recommend that you can name the Potomac Elementary, or Potomac Shores Elementary after Betty Covington. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. George Hampton. Mr. Hampton?
Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. Walts, I have been a member of Prince William County since August fifteenth of nineteen sixty-nine. Both of my children, who are now in their fifties, went through the public school system here in Prince William County. I am a retired Army Lieutenant Colonel, and I chose to live in Prince William County, not by some accident of birth, but I chose to live here. I am in a very unique position. I have known both Betty Covington and John Harper for almost thirty years, and I find myself in quite a perplexing enigma here, trying to determine which way I wanted to go. However, having known John and his family for the longest period of time, and been very intimately involved with the two families, I have chosen to ask that you honor John Harper by naming the Potomac Shores Elementary School in his honor. I've known John as a family man, as a soldier, as a politician, as a citizen, as an educator, a community activist, and in all those areas of endeavor, John has excelled. As a matter of fact, John and I, our families were neighbors for over twenty years in Dale City. He now resides in Southbridge, which is the district where the new school will be located. As a soldier, he served in the Army with distinction. He is a Vietnam veteran who received the Combat Infantryman's Badge, and during his service was twice awarded the Bronze Star Medal. Also, he was awarded the Meritorious Service Medal on two occasions. The Vietnamese government awarded him the Cross of Gallantry with the Silver Star, while his neighbor, I watched he and his wife BJ raise three fine sons, and he is now a proud grandfather of seven children. When he came to Prince William County, Colonel Harper immersed himself in the Dale City community.
Thank you, sir. Three minutes goes fast. Thank you.
All right. You got the point.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker is Alfranda Dur, excuse me? No, going once, going twice. Emmett Fletcher.
Mr. Chairman, school board members, and Dr. Walts, and of course, Ms. Allison Salihwhite. It's glad to have you back. You got better wheels to, tonight than you had the last time you're here. You're moving a lot better. Also, I want to wish the school board a happy school board appreciation. Some of the pictures do look like y'all, though, for real. This evening, I'm here to recommend Mr. John Harper for the school board, and I'm for Mr. Harper, but I'm not against Mrs. Covington. They both are my friends. I've been knowing them for a long time, and they have been role models to me as a young African-American man and Prince William County resident. They fellowship to get, together, and they are there for each other's family. And in Prince William County, I think we have an opportunity to really do something great, and I know Mrs. Covington has the Dumfries Library, and you see it on the campus when you drive up. And I remember when I was a child, I used to get off the school bus, and my mom was cooking a pie. I couldn't see the pie, but I could tell what flavor it was, and Betty Covington has that flavor at Dumfries Elementary. You don't have to see her, but you know her presence is all over the school. So, in saying that, that's where she was principal. Twenty years from now, the students at Dumfries Elementary will know Mrs. Covington. But also, on a lighter side, we have two people here this evening, Mr. John Harper and Mrs. Betty Covington, and they love each other. They are friends, and you may want to laugh at what I'm gonna say now, but it makes a lot of sense. Between their ages, they have more than a hundred and fifty years of life. And what better example, you know, make both of them win-win situation. Harper-Covington, two grandparents going to the school, they probably driving each other. I don't know if it'd be driving Miss Daisy or driving Mr. Harper. But we have an opportunity to make a difference. And as I said at the public hearing, you know, this board is qualified, they're educated, and I know that they, they will make the correct decision. And I was talking to Betty this evening, and she said, "Emmett, whichever way it goes, I'm satisfied with it." And Mr. Harper said the same thing. They will continue to watch the Carolina Panthers together, but let's make them both winners, okay? And I trust the board, and you guys have done a lot of loving up on each other tonight, and that's good to see. That means you're getting along nicely, and I hope we continue throughout the year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrea Bailey. Ms. Bailey?
Who can follow that? Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chairman, esteemed board members, Mr. Walts, and your lovely staff. I'm Andrea Bailey, and my information is on file, Ms. Urban. It gives me great honor to come before you tonight on behalf of a dear friend and a dear mentor, Mr. John Harper, Jr., with all due respect to my Ms. Betty Covington, the aforementioned honors that were granted to her on behalf of this school board, and the admiration for the long-term friendship that she shares with Mr. and Mrs. Harper. When we assess the reasons for honoring a community leader, we look at character and presence, and vision and devotion to the community, consistent devotion and commitment to the community, and the honor needs to be representative of the unselfish giving and the moral fortitude of the leader's character. The honor needs to be exemplary of the vision of that leader. The honor needs to be well-deserving of that leader. The honor needs to speak of the positions that the leader has taken to support the community and variety of errors, areas, and the honor needs to represent the role modeling that the leader has shown to the people within the community. The honor needs to be a replica of the leader's vision through the resources that he or she has given, and the stance that the leader has taken on behalf of the community. The transparency that the leader has shown when a mistake has been made, and how that leader moves forward despite, despite errors, when the community needs a strong voice to speak. The strength of the leader, and most of all, the presence of the leader. The honor needs to show the accomplishments of the leader, and how those accomplishments has been shared across the board, past, present, and future for the betterment of the entire community. The honor needs to exist as a visible example of the future generations as that leader represents and strives for. But the honoree has an accountability to receive the honor on the behalf of what he or she is passing on to the next generation. This represents Mr. John Harper, Jr., a military officer who has led a diverse platform of men and women in our country, and exhibited pride, hope, and understanding. I know I'm running out of time. And so, I ask that you consider naming the Potomac Shores Elementary School after John Harper, Jr., an honor that would be bestowed upon a leader that has given much to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to the signups at the door. Our next speaker is Hilda Barg. Hilda?
Good evening. Boy, it's gonna be a long night, I think. My name is Hilda Barg, twenty-two oh six Cherry Hill Road in the Potomac District, and I'm here tonight to support and speak for my dear friend, Betty Covington. Betty has been my friend for over fifty years. Not only has Betty been a friend to Hilda Barg, Betty Covington has been a friend to the children of Prince William County. Betty served over fifty-four years in the Prince William education system, and you know, I have so many personal experiences that show her love for her community and for the kids. She's been the principal of the low-demographic schools for twenty-seven years, and she has always treated each student with love and care. I can't tell you how many times when Betty and I are out in the, out in the community, usually we go to lunch once a week, and everywhere we go, someone comes up to her to tell her how much they love her, and it really shows that they love her, because you know, she, they said, "You were my favorite teacher. You were my favorite principal," and just so much love out here in this community. But you know, one of the things that you may not know about Betty Covington is she cared about the children who were less fortunate. Betty would always, always gather up some of the children. She took them out to dinner, because many of these kids never got to go out to dinner. Out to McDonald's was a big treat for them. She would take them to football games. She would take them to baseball games. And another thing that I want to share with you about Betty is that she always, always had a heart for kids. She knew the ones who had a need, whether it was medicine. Many people never knew how many prescriptions Betty was out there buying, or food for that, for certain families. See, my time is getting short, but I do want to share with you that I live on the Cherry Hill Peninsula, and I think Betty has taught the children of every family that lives on Cherry Hill Road, and not only the children, she's now teaching their grandchildren. I'm not now teaching them, but has taught them at one point. But Betty has done so much for this community, and you know, she's sitting back there tonight, and she's very quiet. But you know what? She will accept whatever happens tonight, because she's that kind of person. She loves this community. She loves her friend, John Harper, and I know for sure she loves me, and I thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jim Kazanek. Jim, I'm gonna have you come up, but I'm gonna actually call ten more speaker, you can come up to the microphone, I'm just gonna call the next ten up, so they're right behind you. Again, next ten speakers that can come up to the front, Marvin Dent, Nancy West, Gary West, Eileen Thrall, Patrick Sowers, Mary Gordon, is it Darrell? Darrell Sharp, Serena Hicks, Barbara Woods, and Dolores Macentio, I believe, Macenko, maybe. Macenko, sorry. It's right on the line. Thank you. Your time starts now, sir.
Mr. Chairman, board members, and Dr. Walts, good evening. My name is Jim Kazanek, and I live at one-eight-two-five-two Linton Court in Dumfries. Both of our sons attended Dumfries Elementary School, Grand Park Middle, and Potomac High School. I am here tonight in support of naming the new school in Potomac Shores after Betty Covington. She was the principal at Dumfries Elementary School when both my sons attended. They had excellent teachers and received a quality education, which provided a solid foundation for learning. When she became principal at Dumfries, there was no clinic for six students to go to. She established a clinic so the students would have adequate care. She also cares about the students and their safety. She was instrumental in the approval of the sidewalks on Panther Pride Drive. Too often, there is a tragedy that has to happen before a change like this is made. We should all be thankful for people like Betty Covington, who saw a need and took action before a tragedy happened. She has dedicated over fifty years of service providing support to students, teachers, staff, and this community. My son, who was at Virginia Tech, said he wishes he could be here to speak tonight. I can't think of anyone else who deserves this honor more than Mrs. Covington. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marvin Dent.
Dr. Walts, school board members, it's an honor for me to be here tonight to speak on behalf of two people. One, I learned basically mostly being a military person, a military man, from what I understand, if I had a son, I would like for him to follow him in battle. I learned a lot about Mr. Harper. I never met the gentleman. He's in the hospital tonight. I wish he was here, where I could talk to him a little bit. Someone mentioned up earlier about a library, being named after Betty Covington. By the way, I am in here tonight to strongly, more than strongly, even more than that, support of Betty Covington. We'll get into that a little later. But someone spoke about a library. You know what? That's awesome. But a library is a little corner, it's a little part of a, a big project. We're talking about the overhaul pitch, the big thing, something that a woman has spent her entire adult lifetime, an educator. Fifty-four years in Prince William County. Can you imagine? Most ever have a student that's not even fifty-four years old. Some of us might not even live to get fifty-four years old. But a great lady, whose family's followed her tradition, her son, an icon, a legend, baseball coach at Potomac High School, her husband, since the day Potomac High School was built, has coached kids there free of charge, never charged a penny, carried kids all across the places. Betty Covington has taught my kids, my grandkids, and more kids. I lived on the Cherry Peninsula also for sixty-seven years. The last twelve years of my life, I moved to Dumfries to, for this big place that I could have, maybe a place for a school. I say that Betty Covington, in the annals of the history of Prince William School Board, thou will never, ever, ever be one, I think, that will ever serve. Fifty-four years. Can you imagine? Fifty-four years. Having kids come to school, thirty of them in a class, as a parent, a mom at home, we can hardly take care of two. Taking care of these little kids, meet them, we got security today. In the early days, Betty had no security. She's up there watching the kids, get off the school bus, cold water, whatever, to make sure they were safely into school. to make sure they were safely into school. I could just go on and on about Betty Covington. She is a legend. Take my word for it. She is a legend, and believe me, a library is just part of something. Let’s do the right thing. Let’s give her the, before she goes off and says, “Let’s sit off at the great big Betty Covington Elementary School.” Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy West. Nancy? Nancy West?
I don’t know how I can follow Mr. Dent. Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, members of the School Board, and Superintendent, I’ve almost forgotten your name, Walts. My name is Nancy West. My information is on record, but I am a fifty-four-year resident of Dumfries. I am here this evening in support of naming the school to be built at Potomac Shores for Mrs. Betty Covington. I would like to start by reading from a statement which I found on the School Board website and which was up here on your screen this evening as to what should be considered in naming the selection of the naming of a school. I’m quoting, “The committee will consider geographic or historical identifiers as well as living or deceased persons who have made local, state, or national service contributions. Selection preference shall be given to those individuals who have made significant contributions to the field of education, especially within Prince William County.” I understand that this statement was written by the School Board members sitting here this evening. Now, if this board is going to adhere to their own guidelines, there is only logically one selection, and that is Betty Covington, that you have heard over and over, has served in the field of education in Prince William County for fifty-four years. Mrs. Covington came to Prince William County in 1961 and began her career at Dumfries Elementary School, where she taught for nine years. She then went to Dale City Elementary School to help implement the new year-round school program. Following that, Mrs. Covington helped to establish and was principal of the first Prince William County Kindergarten Center, which was housed at the Garfield High School Building, the old Garfield High School Building, which is now called the Fallazzo Government Building. Once kindergarten was established in all of our county schools, Mrs. Covington then became principal of Kilby Elementary School, where she served for nineteen years. Mrs. Covington then retired, but was the first woman in the Dumfries District, now the Potomac District, but Dumfries District, to be elected to the Prince William County School Board representing the Dumfries District. After serving on the School Board for one and a half years, Mrs. Covington was called out of retirement to serve as principal of Dumfries Elementary. This was at a time when test scores at this school were falling below an acceptable level. Prior to Mrs. Covington coming as principal to Dumfries Elementary, there had been four principals within seven years period. Mrs. Covington—
Thank you, ma’am. Thank you very much.
I encourage you, and you know, I could say much more, but I encourage you to please, the only logical selection is to adhere to your own guidelines and name this school the Betty Covington Elementary School.
Thank you, ma’am. Our next speaker is Gary West. Mr. West?
Hear ye, hear ye! The town crier is here to endorse a name for the new Potomac Shores Elementary School. Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, Dr. Walts, and the School Board. And I’m a retired elementary school teacher, too. I’m here to support naming the new elementary school that is being built at Potomac Shores for Betty Covington. And I know Betty Covington. I just not, don’t know of her. I know her. The other night, after attending the meeting at the naming committee, naming at Potomac High School, I did not hear anything about Betty’s achievements, her awards. And I told her that. Lo and behold, I got an email. So, that’s what I’m going to present here. I have a whole list. I’m just only gonna, and it takes a whole page, but it’s in, must be Type 8 or something like that because it’s so small. But I’ll just name a few. For the local area, there’s a whole list. I had eleven here, but I’ll just give you about four. She was on, she is, I think, still on the Board of Directors of the Boys and Girls Club for twenty-five years. She’s been this county spelling bee judge and the head judge for twenty years. She was grand marshal for the Dumfries Christmas Parade. And I know about this because I’m the town crier. I lead the Dumfries Christmas Parade. And at that time, I told her driver, I said, “Please don’t run me over, and Betty, you watch that he doesn’t.” So, I can only walk so fast. And she has served on various Prince William County Board of, School Board Committees like Head Start, Spatial Education, the Audit Committee, the Virginia School Board Association Delicate, and the Washington Area Boards of Education, WABE, W-A-B-E. And for the state, elected to the Virginia School Board Association’s State Conference to serve a two-year term as an at-large member on the Board of Directors. She was appointed by the Virginia School Board Association, oh goodness. Served on the Curry School of Education Foundation Board of Directors at the University of Virginia for several years. And she has gotten lots of other awards, and I can’t mention them now because I’m running out of time. So, I ask you, what other name would be better suited for the new school of Potomac Shores other than Betty Covington? A person of unquestionable integrity—
Thank you, sir.
—a person in education all her adult life for a building for education.
Thank you, sir.
Betty D. Covington Elementary School, named for a world-class educator.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eileen Thrall. Eileen?
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, Board Members, and Superintendent Walts. I’m Eileen Thrall. My information is on file. I’m here tonight to support the naming of the new elementary school in Potomac Shores located in Dumfries, Virginia for Mrs. Betty Covington. I am a forty-nine-year resident of Prince William County and have seen the county grow from rural to urban suburban during that time. I first met Mrs. Covington as a parent when she was the principal of the six-hundred-student kindergarten that met at what is now the Fallazzo Building. Later, I was aware of Mrs. Covington’s work and dedication as I served as a member of the Division Planning Council and as an appointed member of this School Board before it became an elected board. So, I’m kind of dating myself there. For more than fifty years, and as the county went from rural to urban suburban, Mrs. Covington was a teacher, an assistant principal, a principal, and an elected member of the Prince William County School Board. I know of no one who has given more to the children and the citizens of Prince William County. For her dedication as an educator and citizen in our county, I encourage you to honor Mrs. Covington and name the new school in her honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patrick Sowers. Mr. Sowers?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. All the meeting, yeah, meeting minutes from Monday evening were all typed up, so you can see my remarks from Monday. We all have Google. We can see a lot about both of these individuals, good, bad, and indifferent online. I spoke about Betty Covington as my principal as a fourth-grade student many, many years ago. And it started sinking in that, you know, Betty doesn’t have a lot of medals and awards that she can hang on her, but I am a medal and award for her and the things that I’ve accomplished because of what she taught me. She taught me integrity. She taught me manners, and she taught me respect. So, you’ve got fifty-four years. Mr. Deutsch is twenty-seven. Mr. Wilk is about thirty-two. Mr. Sawyers, forty, forty-one. Mr. Braun, I have—
Thirty, thirty-eight, please, thirty-eight.
Hey, it’s the hair, man. I’m sorry. So, I’ve lived in the county long, and ladies, I will not even attempt. You’re welcome. So, I’ve lived in this county longer than three of the four gentlemen on the Board have been alive. Betty Covington has been an educator in this county for fourteen years longer than I’ve lived in the county. Fifty-four years. She doesn’t have a list of fraternity brothers to come out and speak for her. She doesn’t have the Democratic Chairman to send threatening emails to the Board Members about this. What she does have is students. And I tried to do some calculations today about how many students you would touch in fifty-four years. And I didn’t do very well in calculus, so I gave up. I can tell you it’s in the tens of thousands of tax-paying families and students in Prince William County. As the lady suggested, you all changed the policy on how schools would be named. Not for political reasons, not for campaign contributions, but for significant contributions to education in Prince William County. There is not a human being that is alive or has ever been alive that has contributed more to education in Prince William County than Betty Covington. It would be a travesty if she did not have a school named after her. And after you name this school after her, stop this madness of naming schools after people that are still alive. Stop the madness of naming schools after people. Locations are a wonderful thing that help you to know where the schools are. Don’t pit two different parts of the community against each other. You have two great people here. And unfortunately, you can only pick one. I implore you to pick, make the right choice and pick the fifty-four-year educator here in Prince William County. Good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Gordon. Mary?
Good evening. My name is Mary Gordon, and I live at 13428 Carriage Hill Drive in Manassas. I’m here tonight to speak in support of naming Prince William County’s newest elementary school after an educator who has devoted her life to the students of this community, Betty Covington. Mrs. Covington was the principal of Kilby when my daughter attended there and always showed the utmost care and concern for getting to know her students and families. She was there dishing out ice cream when my daughter made the honor roll and to celebrate with her and her best friend when they earned spots on the middle school cheerleading team. In fact, my daughter is now grown and works as an educator herself. And to this day, Mrs. Covington recognizes her, says hello, and always asks, “How’s little Ronnie?” Little Ronnie is my husband, who is now in his sixties. Although he isn’t much of a public speaker, I am here to tell you that Mrs. Covington, who also happens to have been my husband’s fourth-grade teacher at Dumfries Elementary, made quite an impact on all of our lives, and the fact that for more than fifty years later, she still remembers him and his daughter means the world to us and shows the type of care and concern that Betty Covington brought to her career serving the families of Prince William County. I can’t think of an educator more deserving of such an honor, and I thank you for considering her. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Darrell Sharp. Darrell?
Good evening, School Board officials and Superintendent. My name is Darrell Sharp, and I’m here to recommend the new elementary school located in Potomac Shores community to be named in honor of John Harper Jr. I have known Mr. Harper for over six years, and what we have in common is our strong passion for the military and community service. Like Mr. Harper, I also served twenty-three years in the Army and retired as a Lieutenant Colonel. We were both commissioned as officers in RSC, pretty much known as Reserve Officer Training Corps, except he graduated from Howard University and I graduated from Virginia State University. Please keep in mind that officers were entrusted with the welfare, morale, and professional development of the soldiers under their command. As such, the Army grants officership to only the most qualified, talented men and women. This proves that Lieutenant Colonel Retired Harper is a true leader. I’m pretty sure becoming a commissioned officer in the late 1950s was probably tougher than becoming an officer in the late 1980s. So, I commend him for his hard work and outstanding dedication for achieving this goal. Mr. Harper, love for his country led him to serve in the Vietnam War for two years, September 1965 to September 1966, and June 1970 to June 1971. As a field artillery and air defense artillery officer, he received numerous awards, which were mentioned earlier by some of the Harper supporters. Mr. Harper, community service within Prince William County has been outstanding. In the 1990s, he enjoyed mentoring students at Minneville Elementary School. In 2015, he was present during the 50th Voting Rights Act Celebration. He attended numerous community events to support our youth, such as the MLK Ora Caturica Contest by the Deltas for over twenty years now. His desire to be involved with challenges of law enforcement in the nation last year led him to attend town hall meetings at First Mount Zion Church in Dumfries of local religions and law enforcement officials to discuss the recent national-wide concerns regarding community policing and also community forum on civil rights and policing at First AMM Church at Manassas on ideals toward improving communications and relationship between local police officers and residents of the great Manassas area. Lastly, he also mentored me during my time as a previous chapter president in this fraternity through my challenges of making tough decisions, which led to a successful two years. There is no doubt in my mind, he is a true trailblazer and has a strong value for his family, country, and community. Mr. Harper is a role model to our children, inspiring them to reach great heights in their academic achievements, which is why the next elementary school should be named John Harper Jr. Elementary School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Serena Hicks. Serena?
Good evening. My name is Serena Hicks. I’m at 16107 Edgewood in Dumfries. I’m in Potomac District, and I’m here to talk about something completely different. It’s not that I’m not interested in what to name the elementary school, it’s just that both of them are excellent choices. So, to move along, my issue today actually stems from my attending the marathon meeting we had the last time. And what I noticed was that a number of people who spoke gave y’all bad facts, really bad facts, on not just one topic, on a couple of topics. And so, that made me think, because I am a researcher, that is my training, I have advanced degrees to prove it and the whole thing. There are some of them are in Latin. Did you know Georgetown gives their degrees in Latin? It’s strange. So, in any case, being a researcher, what struck me was that after seeing all of these terrible facts from speakers at the last meeting, I am moved to ask how y’all get your information to make your policy decisions. It’s not clear to me, from any of the stuff that I see online, what exactly informs your decisions. I’ve spoken to several of you, and y’all have seven, and on a couple of occasions, I’ve gotten sort of general facts, like, “This is a thing that happens.” But I don’t know where y’all get these facts. And it seems to me that facts are an important thing, and I’d like to see y’all making evidence-based sorts of decisions, especially when you’re talking about teaching my child. So, if you’re asking my child to learn how to think critically and to consider information and present it by giving citations, I would think that y’all would want to do the same thing. So, I’m asking that when y’all are making particularly contentious decisions, that you might consider including some of the references you’re citing, that you might consider saying, “Hey, when we’re talking about the LGBTQ stuff, these are the sources that we’re looking at. This is the suicide rates, this is where we’re getting statistics, this is where we’re getting all of our background information.” I would like for you to think about, when you’re talking about things like the PE issue, that you think about citing, “Where are you getting those facts?” When you’re talking about SOLs and talking about increasing or decreasing the number of SOLs, think about citing, “Where are you getting those facts?” I’m not talking about one issue, I’m talking about several. And I think as a taxpayer and as somebody who’s entrusting you with my child and teaching my child, I want to see good habits from y’all. So, please consider talking about or including that in your reports. This is where I’m getting my information. Are you getting them from peer-reviewed studies? Are you getting them from straight-up statistics? I’d like to see that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Barbara Woods. Barbara?
Good evening. My name is Barbara Saunders Woods. My— My address is not on file, but I have taught for 35 years here in Prince William County. My father, Herbert Saunders, was also a longtime educator in Prince William and was honored by having Saunders Middle School named in his behalf. That was, as he said, his greatest honor other than Mary and Mom. He was a smart man. I am here tonight to speak in support of another dedicated educator. That's Betty Covington. Over the years, Betty considered Dad as her mentor, and he, in turn, saw great potential in her abilities as an educator. In 1971, as Personnel Director for the school system, Dad appointed Betty as the Assistant Principal of Dale City Elementary. In this position, she shared the responsibility of implementing the successful year-round school program. This was the first year that we had year-round school in Prince William. In 1974, he appointed Betty as the principal of the first public kindergarten center in Prince William. The Saunders Center, as it was called, pulled kindergarten students from five elementary schools. It had an enrollment of 600 students. Betty, as principal, was very instrumental in getting the center and its 600 kindergarten students off to a good and smooth start. She remained there for two years. In 1976, Betty was appointed principal of Kilby Elementary School. She served successfully in that capacity for 19 years. The knowledge Betty gained as a teacher and as an administrator was valuable experience for the many years she later served on the Prince William County School Board. While serving more than 12 years on the school board, Betty continued to always consider herself an educator rather than a politician. She never stopped working for the students of Prince William County. Because of her 54 years of dedicated service to education in Prince William, I am recommending that the new elementary school at Potomac Shores be named in honor of Betty Covington. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dolores Mosenko. And Dolores, you can take the podium. I'm going to call up the remaining speakers. You can take the podium, it's okay. I'm just going to call up the remaining speakers, if we can clear the front row here. The sign-up at the door was Joanne Bonnerese, Mary Jean Kellogg, Carl Marcucci, Dave Nuzzo, Abram Marsh, Miles Polmas? I'm sorry, just having trouble reading it. Charles Brown and Philip Wilkins. And I apologize again, the handwriting's sometimes tough for me. So, Dolores, your time begins.
Good evening, all. My name is Dolores Mosenko, and I am here to support Betty Covington this evening. I worked for her from 1981 to 1987 at Kilby Elementary School in a secretarial position. After working in three different Prince William County schools for 30 years until I retired, I can attest to the fact that Ms. Covington was a master principal who could relate to all people, no matter what their temperament or socioeconomic level was. She respected each and every one of her teachers and staff, and in return, they performed at 100% for her. I always would say, "If you gave her an inch of work, you were rewarded with a mile of thoughtfulness." Not only was she concerned about each of her employees professionally, but also personally. While working under her leadership, her care and concern for her students was always foremost in her daily planning. She frequently held assemblies to recognize student achievement, citizenship, and attendance. Each February, a lot of thought and effort was put into Black History Month activities. Students would put on skits and little programs about Martin Luther King and other prominent black people. During one of these programs, Larry Bell, who was at the time the multicultural director of Prince William County Schools, was present. He was so impressed that he arranged for several elementary school children in the county to be transported to Kilby Elementary School to see the performances. Betty D. Covington is a legend in Prince William County, and she deserves for the new elementary school on the eastern end of Prince William to carry her name. I am honored to speak in her behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joanne Bonnerese. Ms. Bonnerese?
Mr. Superintendent and school board members, I'm Joanne Bonnerese, and I proudly stand here tonight, and I do echo the eloquent speakers preceding me in support of the school being named to John Harper Jr. Many, many years ago, we came to Prince William County about the same time that the Colin Powells and the Harpers and the many other military families. We've stayed here, our children, our grandchildren, have some of us, we're still here, and that's been over 30 years. And I proudly am standing here tonight in support of this school being named for Mr. Harper. A few years ago, there was a play that was put on by CPAC. It says, "I Am One, Send Me." This play was about Ms. Jenny Dean, an educator here in Prince William County before any one of us came. John Harper is here on the shoulders of Ms. Jenny Dean, as well as many of us here in the county. She was a trailblazer, and so is John Harper, a trailblazer in leadership and public service, in involvement in our community, and being a miniature mentor for all of us of all ages. He brought to Prince William County Shirley Caesar, just as Ms. Jenny Dean brought Frederick Douglass to raise money, to help to build the school, the Jenny Dean School. Ms. Shirley Caesar, a renowned gospel singer from North Carolina. Even though John Harper didn't benefit any money from that, bringing Shirley Caesar here, he said to me, "Well, the community enjoyed this gospel singer, and to have this renowned person to come here." He's a trailblazer of undonned faith, and that is the name of the book that was written for Ms. Jenny Dean, Undonned Faith. With his support and his humility and his perseverance, we believe and we hope that you will consider the naming of the new school, John Harper. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mary Jean Kellogg.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, school board members, Dr. Walts. I'm Mary Jean Kellogg, and I live at 15738 Vista Drive in Dumfries. This will be short, but I wanted to tell you why Betty Covington deserves to have this new school named in her honor. 54 years in education is an outstanding achievement. Betty Covington and I met 21 years ago when she was volunteering for grad night for our graduating seniors. Even after a day's work as principal, Betty was volunteering, helping children with their charity work and in other activities such as Boys and Girls Club. She was often involved in other areas of education, such as serving on the Board of Directors for the Curry School of Education at UVA and later with its awards committee. Many of Betty's years were spent in the Dumfries Potomac District as principal and school board representative. Betty Covington's dedication to education and contribution to the success of thousands of students are outstanding accomplishments. She is truly deserving of the honor of Betty Covington Elementary School in the Potomac District.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carl Marcucci. Carl?
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, Dr. Walts, and board members. My name is Carl Marcucci, and my address is on file. I'm here tonight to advocate for Betty Covington to be named of the Potomac Shores Elementary School. Before I start some of the comments that I'd written down here, I did a little research, and wouldn't you know, according to Forbes Magazine, Prince William County is the 8th fastest-growing county in America. No surprises there, right? The Prince William County School District is the 35th largest in the nation this year, 2017, ranking above Austin, Fort Worth, and Baltimore schools. So, to keep up with all this growth, and as we've seen, new schools need to be built fairly regularly here. The good news is, these schools are now being named and renamed after deserving people from this area in the great state of Virginia. This time around, renaming is being considered for Potomac Shores. I've heard a lot of great comments out of people, and, you know, over the whole evening here, and it's been a long evening, and I know you want to go, probably go home and eat, if nothing else. But I'm confident that this board will make the right decision. Whether it be a compromise, whatever you do, I'm confident you'll make the right decision. But what I wanted to say is, what is a criteria, you know, for naming a school after someone? From what I know, it's based on merit, okay? And in this case, Mrs. Covington meets and exceeds all of the possible criteria I can think of when it comes to that one important word. You know, 54 years of service here at PWCS, a teacher for 10 and 1/2 years, an assistant principal for three years, a principal for 27 years, school board member for 13 and 1/2 years. She even voted to build Potomac Shores, which will open this fall, as you know. She's worked cooperatively with the school board and advocated to get new schools built, Mary Williams Elementary, Potomac Middle School, along with additions, renovations, expansions at Ashland, Montclair, Henderson, Patty, Washington Reed, Dumfries, and Grand Park Schools. She advocated the complete renovation at Potomac High School, 30-room addition, new gymnasium, turf football field, programs in welding, culinary arts, cybersecurity. She did a lot as a principal as well. But Mrs. Covington put in, you know, over 50 years of service in this county and its schools. From what I've seen, she's ubiquitous, she attends almost everything, everybody sees her, everybody knows her. A job of a school board member, her last paid position is a job of passion, caring, and commitment. In my personal experience, having two kids in school, she's advocated for us, she's been there when we needed help and had questions. She's answered questions at 10 o'clock at night, calling me back from her work voicemail. But she enjoys the students and people of Prince William County. She's put in her time in the renaming, it probably should go to her. What better way to show recognition and appreciation for so many years of solid, proactive, and loyal commitment?
Thank you, sir.
You, me, and our children. She's truly a cornerstone of the PWS structure as it stands today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Dave Nuzzo. Dave?
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, members of the board, Dr. Walts. My name's Dave Nuzzo, and my address is on file. I've come to talk tonight about a couple of things. I just, first of all, wanted to commend you on making it through the zoning, the boundary issues that you had gone through for the last couple of meetings. I know it could be rough. I've been a, I grew up in this county, I've lived in this county for over 45 years. I went to Niapsco Elementary, Minneville Elementary, I went to Saunders Elementary, as well as Enterprise Elementary. Went to Woodbridge Middle School, Saunders Middle School, and I lived in Dale City and was, rode on a bus every day all the way out to Osborne Park on the west side. So, you know, there's no real big, you know, distinction, east-west. You know, it's Prince William County, all the kids. And what I really wanted to talk to you about is the vote that took place last week. I don't know, I read the minutes, I didn't get to see the, I missed that one last week, but I didn't, I saw that it was the vote and the special meeting were reversed, rescinded, which, as Mr. Bender said earlier, under Robert's rules, it required a 2/3 vote without any prior notice. I don't understand how that can actually have then made it into the minutes as being rescinded. Like you all to look at that and maybe fix the minutes and take care of that. And, I mean, you're passing up 21-plus million dollars to, for the price model high school, as well as other county improvements, which would give the new high school 500 additional seats. It's planning for now, it's planning for the future. You won't have to deal, I'm sure there are other issues that will be to have to deal with, but you'll have 500 more seats on the, for that high school in the future, which would be a big help. So, I just ask that, you know, the school board, that you move forward, you know, with integrity, dignity, professionalism, in your constitutional duty to provide all students of Prince William County with a world-class education. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Our next speaker is Abram Marsh. Abram?
Good evening, Chairman Saunders, Vice Chair Jesse, school board members, superintendent. I want to thank you for this opportunity to come before you and speak on behalf of naming the new school, Potomac Shores, after Lieutenant Colonel Retired John Harper. My name is Abram Marsh, my information is on file, and I too am a military officer. I will be retiring later this year, hoping to do what Mr. Harper did, which is make a positive impact on the community to which I live, which is Prince William County. And like him, I've had the opportunity to lead troops in combat operations, and just like you all sitting here doing what you do, you don't lead for popularity. You don't make decisions because it's the nice thing to do. You do it because it's the right thing to do. And we know that, whether it be Ms. Covington or Mr. Harper, you will make a decision that will represent the community of Prince William County. But why did I ask to stand before you and represent Mr. Harper? It's because, as I mentioned before, he is one of our community's hidden figures. And I will elaborate on that just a little bit. You know, he's been listed as a lot of firsts. Well, to be listed as a first doesn't necessarily measure the man. I mean, this is Super Bowl week. Jim Kelly and the Buffalo Bills were firsts, but they lost. You know, unlike them, Mr. Harper has done a tremendous amount for our community. But more importantly, he's done a lot like Hidden Figures, the movie. Those women helped launch John Glenn into space. By his efforts in helping with the cost share agreement many years ago, we are able to have a $1.5 billion budget. I don't know how many of you have traveled across the country like me and some of my compatriots have, but that's a good problem to have. And to be able to have schools like Potomac Shores, Kyle Wilson, where my son goes, those are good problems to have. And we want leaders like Mr. Harper to be recognized for their leadership and their contributions, to help have these issues or these solutions given to our communities for many, many years to come. Again, thank you all so very much for everything that you do every day. Again, thank you all so very much for everything that you do every day for our community and for our students.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Miles. Is it Miles Polhamus? Okay, sorry, the handwriting was getting me. I'm sorry if I messed it up beginning with, your time begins now, sir.
Good evening, school board members, and thank you for your service to our community. My name is, or my address is on file. My name is Miles Polhamus and I'm currently a sophomore at the very overcrowded Patriot High School. First, I would just like to thank you for inspiring me to speak to you tonight and sparking a new interest of mine: politics. Politics is exactly what the debate over the 13th high school has become. Although I will not be attending this future high school that is planned to open in 2021, my younger brother would, that is, if the school doesn't get delayed again. At Patriot High School, there are currently 22 trailers. Many of my friends have two or more classes a day in these trailers. My understanding is that at Battlefield High School, the situation is similar or even worse. By voting for the price model design, the school board would be voting for capacity. The west side of the county is continuing to grow rapidly and I believe it is the most appropriate and responsible choice to not open this new school at or over capacity, requiring yet another new high school to be built shortly after. I would also like to note that before moving to Gainesville, I attended Lakewood Elementary in Ms. Lily Jesse's Okaquan district. While there is no doubt, elementary school overcrowding is a huge issue on the eastern part of the county, I would like to remind the school board members that they represent and are responsible for all Prince William County's students, not just the ones in their individual districts. I encourage the Prince William County Board of Supervisors, or School Board, to spend the $20 million the Board of Supervisors graciously gave you to relieve and prepare for overcrowding on both sides of the county. You will recall that this is the reason that you were given the extra money in the first place. Thank you for your time and consideration in this most important matter affecting Prince William County.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Charles Brown. Mr. Brown?
Good evening, board members and everyone present. I am here because I am passionate about the naming process. Being a Dumfries resident, I wanted to be sure that the name of the new school is something that we all can be proud of. I believe that John Harper Elementary School has a nice ring to it. I believe he, excuse me, Mr. Harper is a man well worthy of this honor. As a former member of the military, I have a special respect for those that have served our country nobly. Mr. Harper served two combat tours of duty in Vietnam and was honored for serving there with two Bronze Stars and two meritorious medals. He served with distinction in our military at a time in our country where the war in Vietnam was not a popular war. I have seen the pictures and heard of stories how some of our veterans of that war were spat upon when returning home from that faraway place. We now honor and show much deserved respect to those who have served our country while in uniform, but Mr. Harper did it during a time of great political and social turbulence in our country. It was not a popular thing at that time to serve our country, nation, our country during the 60s and the 70s. If you're old enough to remember those days, I believe Dumfries is filled with many military heroes. There are probably a few here in this room tonight. Nevertheless, Mr. Harper's return to Prince William County, where he has worked hard to benefit our youth and this entire country, makes him a unique candidate for the naming of the new school. Mr. Harper has sacrificed for both his country and his community. I ask this board to please honor the wishes of our community and honor this man by naming the school the John Harper Jr. Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our final speaker of the evening is Mr. Philip Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins?
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent. I'd like to thank you for your service and thank you for letting me speak. My name is Philip Wilkins. My information is on file with the clerk. My comments tonight are really directed to Ms. Jesse, mainly Ms. Jesse because I believe in you. I respect you. After attending a few meetings since the fall and hearing your perspective on various things, I've come to develop a good deal of respect for you, Ms. Jesse. I respect your history, that you marched in the civil rights movement. I respect that you genuinely seem to desire to put students first in your decisions. I believe you to be a principled woman. However, I believe you have gone down a path that is inconsistent with your integrity. Mr. Sawyers is a baseball coach, so he especially should understand the importance of a team dynamic. And I would like to ask you, Ms. Jesse, did you think deeply before you signed your name to the letter to the DOJ implicating the other five board members and the Board of County Supervisors? Did you consider that such a thing would destroy team unity and your ability to work for the common good, which I know you care about? I don't think that letter was your idea. I would ask you to please don't be led down a path to nowhere. I would also like to address a couple of comments you made at the last meeting in regards to Policy 060. You mentioned that you're from South Carolina. I am too. I would like to mention that I oppose the policy change, both for practical reasons and out of principle. And I know many people from this state and from that state who are very well-educated, good people, who also oppose such things for reasons such as human history, the natural law, or the desire to do what is right in God's sight. I would ask you to resist the temptation to paint such people as unthinking and unsophisticated and consider the merits of the arguments dispassionately and honestly. You also mentioned that 25- and 30-year-olds don't really care about things like Policy 060 or changes to it. You mentioned that your children had influenced you in this way. I'm 34, and you don't speak for me in that regard. I know many 25- to 30-year-olds who also oppose such things. You also mentioned after some people spoke about rezoning, I don't know, five or 10, that the people have spoken. But in September, over 100 people-
Thank you, sir.
-white, black, young, old, male, female, Protestant, Catholic, and Muslim, all spoke against such things. I would ask you to listen to them too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on to board matters. Ms. Satterwhite, I spoke to you earlier, said I would let you go first in case you wanted to sneak out. I know I've been sitting there trying to make it work. So Ms. Satterwhite, we'll start with you on that side of the dais.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do I still get to go first if I stick it out through the meeting? Do I still get to go first if I stick it out through the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
The choice is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as most of you know, this is my first week back, first meeting back since having a total knee surgery, and this is day 22, and so it's nice to be back here and try and get into a routine. Yesterday, to get used to sitting for a long length of time, I sat at my desk for a few hours, and it's not fun. But it's nice to have all of you here tonight with us for the school board meeting. I want to start by congratulating Principal Adrian Harrison, Mrs. Terry Jufre, and the staff at Mountain View Elementary School on winning the 2017 Future of Education Technology STEM Excellence Award in the elementary school division. Mrs. Jufre, I want to thank you for the 14 hours that you spent applying for that honor while on your vacation, and I want to thank her and the staff, the students, the school community, who have enabled Mountain View's makerspace to be a model for our county. If you haven't seen Mountain View Elementary School's makerspace or makerspace in one of our elementary schools, it's an amazing place for students to be creative, to learn about STEM, to experiment, and I'm very, very proud of what we've accomplished at Mountain View Elementary School and what they've been allowed to accomplish. I also want to recognize an athlete with perseverance. I read something today and I was just, I was a little blown away. There was a young man who yesterday ran the last leg of his 4x800 relay team. He was sick all weekend with a sore throat and a virus. He didn't eat very much Friday, Saturday, because he was sick. So usually when you're getting ready for a race, you're carb loading, so you're getting your energy ready so you can run that race better with endurance. So he ran the race, he PR'd, personal record again, his time was 2 minutes and 5 seconds for his part of the 4x800. They got, the team got second place and they qualified for regionals. Way to go Battlefield. Scary moments afterwards for the student and his mom. He collapsed, he couldn't get up for quite some time, he vomited, he was laying there and sitting on the track in the ground for about 30 minutes. They finally were able to get him home, they gave him the carbs, electrolytes, and he started feeling better, which was awesome. He gets home and he says, "Well, Mom, I've got to run again tomorrow." His mom's saying, "I'm praying for his full recovery." As a true runner, he just said, "Mom, I'll go through it all over again tomorrow if I qualify for regionals in the 1,000 meters." And his mom called him diehard crazy. And I just want to give a shout out to Zach Hastings and to all of our student athletes who work extra hard to accomplish their goals, because it just, his perseverance just really, really hit me. Winter sports are wrapping up with districts, so I want to give a shout out to our Battlefield High School girls, winter track team, for winning the Cedar Run Championship. And congratulations to our Battlefield High School gymnastics team for their Conference VIII Championship. And then today, as many of you probably know, today was the letter of intention signing day for our student athletes. 21 students from Battlefield High School have signed letters of intent for college, and many student athletes from across our school division have also signed today. It's so exciting to look at the list and to see where our students are going to be going. I know Inside Nova has a list. You can look and see which colleges and universities our students will be attending, and I want to say congratulations to all of them, because they are students first and athletes second. And I'm very excited that Prince William County is sending our students literally all over the country. I also want to say congratulations to our two teams from Battlefield High School who will go on to compete in the cyber competition at the national region round, and we wish you all the best as you continue. Now, on to recent school board events. As I said, I missed the January 18 school board meeting due to my January 10 total knee replacement surgery. Mr. Sawyers even checked to make sure that I wouldn't be in attendance at that last meeting just before the meeting began. I watched most of the meeting live from home. I had physical therapy the next day, so I didn't stay up with all of you at that meeting. And I watched as Mr. Sawyers pulled the minutes from the January 4 meeting and special meeting from the consent agenda and later offered an amendment to the motion, an amendment that the school board did not receive prior notice of and was not published with the meeting agenda. In my opinion, and that of many others with whom I've consulted, the attempt by Mr. Sawyers to, quote, "strike the improper special meeting and associated votes from the record," end quote, is a void motion. Why? A couple of reasons. If Mr. Sawyers was truly attempting to rescind the vote from the January 4 meeting by adding the amendment to the motion at the meeting, Robert's rules requires a 2/3 vote, which would have been five votes to pass. Mr. Sawyers only had four votes out of the seven members in attendance. Additionally, the Code of Virginia in Section 2.2-3707, under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, states, "Minutes, including draft minutes and all other records of open meetings, including audio or audiovisual records, shall be deemed public records and subject to the provisions of this chapter. Nowhere does code allow for the destruction of those records." I would suggest to those in the public who are looking for the January 4 special meeting on our website and can't find it, that you email the school board and ask that it be restored as soon as possible. There's been a lot of confusion in the public since the January 18 meeting, with people wondering about the impact that the actions of the chairman have on the vote taken concerning the January 4 meeting. Legally, the motion approved by this board on January 4 at the special meeting stands. Nothing Mr. Sawyers attempted at the January 18 meeting has changed the legal vote at the legally-held special meeting that was held on January 4. Mr. Sawyers clearly didn't agree with the special meeting, but that does not make it any less legal. Mr. Sawyers has tried numerous times to stop the special meeting from happening, to stop the vote, and now has attempted to erase the meeting and the vote. I still want to know why an offer of 21.3 million in construction funding that will benefit our students is still so unsettling to Mr. Sawyers that he would go to such great lengths to try to prevent the agreement between our board and the Board of County Supervisors. I was also very disheartened that three members of our school board, after losing one vote, decided to file a complaint with the Department of Justice against our school board and the Board of County Supervisors. This letter was improperly sent on school board letterhead with all of our names listed on the paper. Our staff members around the county know, after going through hundreds, if not thousands of hours of training, what the consequences of a Department of Justice investigation can mean to the school division. I am appalled that three members of this board felt they had to go to a federal agency to ask them to weigh in on a vote they lost on the school board. Now our school division will face legal fees because of their actions. Those fees have to come from the budget, a budget that should be geared toward our students, the very students they claim to want to support. What will be sacrificed to pay for the legal bills for this action? Many allegations were made in this letter sent to the Department of Justice. If you would like to know the real demographics of our Prince William County schools, I encourage you to look up the information for yourself on the school report cards that you can find on pwcs.edu. I will provide a link on my Friends of Allison Satterwhite Facebook page. This board has had two training sessions this school year. Key in those sessions was the phrase, "Kids first." This board has got to get back to work, and all of us know that. It's way past time to stop with the personal politics and focus on our students and the needs of our school division. What is occurring with this board is bad not only for our students, our schools, our staff, our division, but also our county. We rely on our county for our funding. If our school board continues with this total dysfunction, we will harm economic development in this county and future funding for our schools. How? Businesses want to move to a place where their employees will be happy and that includes schools, communities with good schools. We are cutting off our own future funding if we continue this way. I've said it before and I'll say it again, either take this job seriously and work hard for our students or leave. There are plenty of people in this county who truly care about our students and want the best for them. I know that this board can work together. We've shown it before with the training sessions we've had, and I really do hope for the best because it's in the best interest of our school division. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Mr. Brown?
All right, thank you Chairman Sawyers. Heads up, as I get started my board matters tonight, I am channeling Anne Murray from 1983 with a little good news. So if any of you are around in 1983 and remember that song, I'm trying to go with the positive hit tonight, so let's see how this works. Kudos to the Gainesville Middle School Chorus for their excellent rendition of the National Anthem prior to the George Mason, George Washington basketball game last Wednesday night. They definitely performed a lot better than my beloved Patriots did that evening against DW, so I want to give kudos to them. It was a pleasure to see them in person perform the National Anthem. I want to give congrats to the many outstanding teachers and principals who were honored last Thursday night at Colgan High School during the Outstanding Educators Ceremony. It was definitely a pleasure to attend and definitely take part in that very positive event in Prince William County schools. I want to thank you to Congressman Whitman and Connolly for both taking time to attend. Would definitely give a lot of thanks to the many family members and fellow staff members with the honor to attend it as well. Kudos to the Battlefield High School I-Lite program for a very successful third annual Haymaker STEM Expo, which was held last Saturday at Battlefield High School. My son Tyler and I attended for a bit on Saturday morning, and we definitely enjoyed interacting with the many engaged students, the staff members, the community members. I want to give a thank you to Battlefield High School teacher Gail Drake for the invitation to attend, and it definitely was a pleasure to chat with her and Battlefield Principal Ryan Farrar on Saturday at that event as well. Kudos to the Piney Branch Advisory Council, or P-BAC, and the students and families of Piney Branch. They just concluded a very successful book drive for students at another nearby elementary school, Mullen Elementary. The P-BAC collected over 20 copy, paper-sized boxes of children's and young adults' books, which will be sorted and will be delivered to Mullen by, I think, midweek next week. And I want to give a special mention to definitely three Piney Branch parents who led that effort, Melissa Patterson, Tracy Halchins, and someone I seem to know quite well, Julie Brand. I'm going to give thank you to the many students who contributed the art around us here tonight for School Board Appreciation Month. I did come into the room early tonight to take some photos, so I look forward to posting those later. My son Tyler, who was at Piney Branch, got to contribute to the Piney Branch poster there and got to draw my rendition. So I do want to thank him. I don't know if this was brown, it was on his part, but I seem to have a lot more brown hair than gray hair up in that image. So, you know, maybe he's angling for a video game. I'm not sure what he's doing, but I definitely want to give him some thanks for that. And last but not least, I want to wish everybody a great February, including our teachers and students, who I know are salivating over unused snow days right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon. Just to be clear, they got my hair exactly right, so. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to give a shout out to Potomac View Elementary's art students who created the sandcastles on either side of the dais. I'm a big art fan and I'm really proud of our, one of my schools, Potomac Elementary, and wanted to give a shout out to the art teacher, Ms. Elizabeth Dugan. I was just there recently and I know all of the great things that they are doing over there at Potomac View, and it's very exciting to see this talented artwork. I'd like to piggyback off of Mr. Brown and say thank you to all of the schools and students and staff members who contributed to our wonderful School Board Appreciation Month posters. I look forward to this month every year to see all of the great things and ideas that they come up with and ways to say thank you. And this year, as always, it is just outstandingly creative and demonstrates and shows how much talent that we have here in this county. And I'd also like to say special thank you to Woodbridge Middle School, because I recognized the principal was here earlier. I'm not sure if she's still here or not, but she made sure to bring special attention to the poster created from the middle school. Most of the times, we see them just from elementary schools, so I thought that was very nice. In addition, I just, well, it's 10:30 at night now, but today was the deadline for CTE and specialty programs. This is CTE month, and I just wanted to bring special attention to that, because I know that all of our students are not going on to four-year universities. Some of them may be doing a combination of both, or what the case may be, but CTE is very important, and it is something that we are steadily adding on to here in this county. In addition- In addition to that, I just would like to encourage everyone to learn a new fact for Black History Month, and it is one of the shortest months that we have, but it's jam-packed full of activities and fun facts and things of that nature, so I would encourage all of us to go out and learn something new. In addition to that, I just want to close out by saying I have to agree with my board member, Ms. Allison Satterwhite, and I would encourage all of our county residents to go out and look at our school demographics and really see what makes each of our schools unique and what makes our county so great and so diverse, and how different we are from one end to the other, and in the middle, and all around, and in between. I think that that's an important point that Ms. Allison Satterwhite brought up, because it does show a little bit about how we are and how we function and how we grow as a county. And it's different from elementary to middle and high school, and we often just get caught up in the one side versus the other side. And I think that our school data profiles are something we don't talk about often, but they do show a good representation of what each school is made up of and the differences and issues that they each have to tackle and undertake. And also on the flip side, some of the great diversity, joy of diversity that we have in our school system. So that was a good point. I just wanted to thank Ms. Satterwhite for that. And that's it. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Ralston?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Soon as I get up close. Okay. I'd like to start off by thanking all of those who came out for the Dell City Civic Association Annual Dinner, where we honor students, teachers, nurses, firefighters, and just, yeah, just about everybody. So let me just say, I'm very proud that Mr. Provincio, Principal of Minneville, became Principal of the Year. We have, we didn't do it, Prince William County. That was this organization. Now, for us at the Dell City Civic, elementary school was Angela Hurt.
I'm not sure if she said it.
It was a B.
Okay.
It was Snowbug.
Okay. Middle school was Tief Carney, honored, and high school was Larry Baker. And they all received money from the Wilburn Management Corporation, and that's the people that sell McDonald's. Our students, Joshua Jones, received the John Jenkins Youth of the Year Award. The environmental winner was Alexander Herrera, and he received the Dave Brickley, the David G. Brickley Environmental Award, and this included a cash... Any other thing in my school? Now, I would like to ask this board if we could amend Policy 131 so that all board members, all board members, can have something placed on the agenda if they would like. Also, I'd like to have placed on the agenda the training for a parliamentarian, and also to take a look, because we've been talking about it and we haven't done it yet. So we have, we did receive the, some information on a person, and I think we need to have that take place as soon as possible. Keeping in mind also, and Ms. Satterwhite already mentioned it, is that we have to really stay within the law. I don't care how much we want to do things, but if we work outside of the law, we are in serious trouble. So hopefully, everything will be put back in its place from January the 4th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Mr. Deutsch?
That's a, wow. I'll go quick, because there's, people want to go home. Couple of events I went to, I do want to recognize, my good friend and principal of Ashland Elementary, Andy Jacks, had a great event at his building that I went to this Saturday. It was an autism Legos and Fun Event, where parents with autistic students and children could come and learn more. In the presentation from Dr. Khan, who came, I want to thank him for that too. Great event, good turnout. I want to thank the Ashland staff for coming to that event, the ones who were there working on a Saturday morning. I also want to thank another friend of mine and teacher at Triangle Elementary, Ryan Osweiler, who runs the robotics program, actually a nationally-ranked robotics program at Triangle Elementary. They had a tournament last Friday. It was fun to be there, good event, and I want to thank Principal Gardel for being a proponent and supporter of the robotics program. Finally, well, not finally, I also want to quickly thank Montclair Elementary. I went to their Quill and Scroll Night right after the last school board meeting, where about 20 students read their short stories. Really great event, good community turnout. Also, want to recognize the Forest Park students who are still here in the audience. They're still, yeah, they're still here. This is an early night for us. You guys think this is late. Thank you for being here. Want to recognize both the Forest Park and Potomac basketball teams. They're having a great season, exceptionally well. Finally, I do want to recognize Ms. Lori Spitzer-Wilk and her Forest Park students for advancing to the Theater Regional One Act Competition this weekend, so congratulations, Lori. And thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Ms. Jessie?
First of all, I want to say thank you to the Dell City Civitan Awards. I was, I've been to that award ceremony several years, and I'm not sure if it's not the only group that recognizes teachers in such a public manner. Yeah, and it was, it was a wonderful award ceremony. I also wanted to specifically say to, and I hope I pronounced it correctly, the Wilburn Corporation Corporation, and I know that one of the persons in that organization is here, and I just want to thank Corey Holman and his family for supporting teachers. They had the big checks, and it was just a beautiful ceremony. Mr. Valencia, that, yeah, Nathaniel Valencia. But anyway, I wanted to say thank, to congratulate him for, he is not just a locally-recognized principal, he is a national principal, he received national recognition from various organizations. He is a model school, national model school for the nation, so I wanted to congratulate him. Fatima DeFain from Woodbridge High School, I know Dr. Waltz mentioned her, but she did receive that award. And what you don't know about her is that this young lady was a director for Othello, and my husband and I had an opportunity to see that, president of the senior class, and was recognized at Kennedy Center for the Cappys Award. I went to Penn Elementary, they asked me to come over to talk about collaborative teaching, which is one of the anthologies that I wrote 2005. But the responsiveness of the teachers in that school, it really made me feel good just to be in a school and to talk to teachers, and I just want to thank them and their staff. To all the other rhetoric, I don't know if it's political or not, but I will just say this, when you have 118 trailers on one end and only 10 at the elementary level, I'm an elementary principal, and I'm very concerned about the lack of equity, and honestly, I do not apologize for that. All I can say about that is that for the eastern end, especially the elementary kids, I don't want second graders out in trailers, and I will fight for that until the end. And you can say whatever you want to say about me, but I know that that's a dangerous situation. I do not apologize for that, and I don't know if it was political or what it was, but for me, and I don't like to divide east and west, but the numbers are what they are. I will say to you about the eastern end, to Dr. Waltz and to his staff, it's our turn. It's our turn, and I'm glad to see something in the budget to address trailers, but the biggest problem we have is overcrowding. And overcrowding does not work for us, because those teachers and students in those overcrowded buildings cannot receive the awards of money for under, for the class size reduction money. Because I've been a principal, you give me money for another teacher, and I don't have a classroom. It just doesn't work for me. And so for that, I will say to everyone here that I will continue to work for kids, I will fight for kids, and I will work with the school board, and for me, it's still an honor to serve. I'm just honored to serve and to work with kids, and I'll always keep kids in mind. And thank you very much for all that you have done to support the school board. I think there's some more training needed, but when we focus on kids, we don't have to worry about all these political things. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, you asked for 10 seconds.
I'm not even going to take that much. I just, before I go home and get beat up, I just wanted to recognize my goddaughter, Elizabeth Kelly, for winning first place in the science fair at Ripon Middle School for engineering. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Yeah, you only needed eight seconds. Yep. I'll be, I'll be very brief. The Principal of the Year, Teacher of the Year, National Board Certified Teacher Program that we had at Colgan High School a few days ago was wonderful, great to use, the space was just right. I think we get a little bigger, we're going to need a slightly bigger space, but the great crowd, and it was, it was great that two congressmen could join us and make it, make it a festive day to celebrate the best of Prince William County. And then I'm going to go and mention that my son is in sixth grade at Gainesville Middle School, and he, as your neighbor, as our neighbors could also tell you, is learning the trumpet. And so he's doing his best, and he's actually doing a very good job, and we're proud of him, because I don't know how to play a single note, so anything is better than me, so I'm not much help there. But they had a little sixth-grade presentation at Gainesville Middle School about where they are and how they're coming along, and it was very highly organized. Mr. Ballas did a great job explaining what he was teaching the kids, how he was teaching the kids, and so he jokingly said, when I talked to him afterwards, was helping put some of the chairs and music stands away, and he jokingly told me that I should say something to Mrs. Porter-Lucas because, because his evaluation was coming up. And I said, I said, "I can do better than that." I said, "I can do better than that. The superintendent will be sitting at my right here in a few days." So he did not know I was going to do that in all fairness to him, but he did jokingly talk about saying it's the principal. But it was a wonderful concert, and it was, not in a concert in the truest sense, but really keeping parents informed on what's going on and why we're, why we're renting these instruments and paying for these instruments. And I found it, as a guy who loves music but can't play or sing a note, I found it very informative to see how my son was gaining ground that way, so I very much appreciate it. So with that, no further business before this board, this meeting is adjourned.